Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, October 13, 2021. The first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, to the end of justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is Citizen Input. Here we go. So if we have some folks in the room who'd like to present, you can sit at the table and use the microphone and go from there. Look how well that worked out.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. So this is Michelle Hoffman from the Band of Brothers of Lepine. And she called me, said, I'm cutting it close. But yeah, so I knew she was coming.
The construction had us going around in circles quite a few times.
Yeah, you can't take a left off a revere, which really messes you up.
And you follow the signs. And it took me back that way, not this way. But anyway, my name is Michelle Hoffman. I'm the brand new president of the band, or Lepine Band of Brothers. Over the last three years, I've had the extreme honor of being the chairperson that actually finally brought the Wallet Hills to Lepine. I'm here to thank the county and especially Mr. DeBonne. We went round and round and hit a lot of dead ends with that grant. We got approved, but we couldn't get the check. Request after request after request, I hit dead ends. And Mr. DeBonne answered my phone call and got me through the roadblocks. So I want to say thank you very much. During our event, we flew a lot of flags and people wondered why. Well, I'm here to tell you why. And Mr. DeBonne, I'm going to ask you if you could come down off your pedestal so I can present you with something.
Not a pedestal, but yeah, the dais.
Well, so what we did with each flag, we're going to present this to you. From the committee, this flag flew over the Wallet Hills representing 58,281 of my brothers and sisters who didn't come home from Vietnam. It flew Thursday, 7:00 AM till noon on September 29, 2021. And I really want a picture with Mr. DeBonne.
Right up here.
Okay.
Because we got the.
I know.
Thank you so much. Very special.
So what does it say?
Thank you for generously supporting the visit of the Wallet Hills, the enduring symbol of bravery and sacrifice to the Lepine, Oregon community, September 28 to October 3, 2021.
I know you'll find someplace in the county where this flag will get the respect it's earned.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you very much.
It's an honor. Well, and I know that.
No six feet.
No, we're good.
Can't tell we're smiling.
Just a little bit.
Okay.
There we go. Much better. Perfect. Thank you.
Long did you get?
Yeah, I got.
All right.
Oh, yeah. I can email it to you.
Okay.
And that's it. Not even three minutes. How's that?
Well, yeah, another comment or two. So I just want to get back on the microphone so people can hear. So it was such a special event and it was, you know, a somber, respectful presentation, but it was a statewide significance also. You know, we saw people from around the state join us.
And the country.
Yeah.
We had license plates from Vermont. We had license plates from all over the country. We figured just guesstimating by counting cars and looking around, between 15 and 18,000 people, we brought into central Oregon to Lepine. All our restaurants were full, our hotels were full, the grocery store was full. So hopefully, we helped a lot of our small businesses in Lepine come back from a very, very hard year on top of this honor.
And the presentation was so special in that field out there. You could see it from the highway. As I say, you and I were there at sunset on the Friday night, I think, and it just starts to glow after sunset. What a special presentation. Thank you for your efforts and all the Band of Brothers keeping, you know, persistent because we did skip a year. We missed a year because of COVID.
Yes, we did. And that was pretty hard to have to make that announcement to my community that we lost it. But we got it back.
Yep.
So I thank you very much for your support.
You have a great day.
You too.
No, thank you for your efforts and not, not giving up because those 58,281 people that didn't come home really truly do need to be honored. And I was there early Friday morning and someone from my hometown of Hepner lost his life in August, I think of 70, let's see when, it was like, maybe 65. Anyway, he's on wall, space number 43. I actually found his name at, at the wall in Washington DC. That was one of my very, you know, important things to do to honor David Clark. And, you know, and I thank you. It's, they need to be thanked. Truly do.
You can't forget or we'll repeat history.
Yeah, we do have to, we do have that happening, don't we?
That was what I, that was what I wanted to thank you for, not only for the wall that, that honored all of those soldiers lost, but also for the, the pretty extensive history lesson or look into the, you know, look into that time provided at the display in front of the wall.
Amazing. It's not really, the main thing that it's.
You can step towards the mic because, yeah, yeah, no, not a problem. Yeah, a few more comments.
The main thing that that spoke to me with that education center is that there are so many, not just grade school kids and high school kids, but 20, 30, and 40-year-olds that don't know about the Vietnam War. They know nothing. And that education center really helps, just like the song, bringing a face to that name, that they're more than a name on the wall. And having our hometown heroes highlighted, it showed. We have a set of brothers from one of ours' close counties. So not only was Deschutes County honored in hometown heroes, but every county that touched ours was honored. And then we also were able to get a gentleman from Madras in the brand new in-memory program, which really helps our families heal. The in-memory program is for those that came home to die, mostly from cancers due to chemical defolians. And so a lot of their families wrongly felt that they died in vain. And no one should ever feel like that. No one. So this new in-memory program is helping a lot of families also. I think that we did an amazing job. I think our community stepped up big time for that, to have that many visitors in Lepine. The healing that we got to provide. I was hugging on a six-foot, four-inch-tall, 325-pound man who was crying over his friends. And I got to comfort. And that's what that's all about, that we finally bring some comfort to those that came home to a pretty ugly country. So I think we did a good job. Don't ask me when I'm going to do it again because that's a no.
Well, thank you so much. Very positive. It was great being able to host it. And the enthusiasm is just infectious. Thank you.
Yes, it is. All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Very positive. So this is Citizen Input. Is there anybody on Zoom with a raised hand feature or a telephone call we don't recognize? Okay. So, and there's nobody else in the room other than our staff, wonderful staff. And if you want to say anything today, this is your opportunity. So seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I want to pull item number four and otherwise move the rest of the consent.
I'd like to pull item number one from the consent agenda.
Okay. Well, with that, item number one and four removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Is there anything else? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So item number one, consideration of signature authorizing Deschutes County property manager to execute sale of county property. So Kristi Bolinger is available. Commissioner Chang, do you want to kick off or?
I, I'd just like to say that this Housing Works project is an excellent and needed project in our community. I would prefer that we sell the land or donate the land to Housing Works because the county has a precedent of donating land for affordable housing projects in other communities, Lepine and Redmond most notably in recent years. Because this purchase will consume the affordable housing fee collections from the City of Bend's affordable housing fee from basically an entire year, $900,000 worth. And those dollars left in the hands of the Affordable Housing Committee for the City of Bend could leverage hundreds of additional units of affordable housing in our community. And because affordable housing is such an urgent need, and this is, it's an urgent need in our, in our community. And this is a critical time when we could be catching up a little bit on affordable housing rather than falling farther and farther behind to the point where this becomes a community like, you know, some of these, you know, destination communities in Colorado or other places where the gap between the incomes that people can make who live in the community and the cost of housing is so great that people have to commute from outside. So, you know, those are the reasons why I would have preferred to have seen this property be donated or sold for less. It, but it, I believe we are going to proceed with selling the property for the appraised value. And if we're going to do that, I would like to commit the funds, the, the proceeds from the sale to additional affordable housing projects.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Dare, any thoughts on, so we, there's an order number that we could authorize or change is the business?
Okay. I honestly do not want to change the order number. One of the letters that we received said, well, we could hold off on doing the courthouse expansion. Well, no, we haven't had a new judge since 2003, an additional circuit court judge. That project cannot be held off on. I believe those judges are supposed to start the first of January 2022. So we've got, you know, we've got major expansion issues here just to keep our county administration, our county doing what we need to be doing and what we need to be funding. So I feel like at this moment in time, Noah, I think the 900,000, it's going right back into Deschutes County, but it's going in a different spot. But I think it's appropriate.
I'd like to speak to the courthouse expansion question. It is not an either-or question. And I want to bring my colleagues back to the deliberations we had during our budget committee meetings in June, just a few months ago, where we made the specific decision not to raise the assessed property tax rate in order to be able to pay for the capital projects we want to proceed with. The decision at that time was not to raise those rates because we have enough funds between reserves, between property taxes raised above our, our operational needs, and because we have extremely low debt burden right now, a low debt load, and, and rates for financing are at historic lows. So at that time, we said, we don't need, you know, we can do this without raising property tax rates. And the fact that now we're saying like, oh, we can't do this project without taking these $900,000 is a misrepresentation of the discussions that we had during our, you know, very financially rigorous budget committee meetings. So that's, that's why I'd like to say that we absolutely can proceed with the courthouse expansion with available resources and, you know, taking on some debt at, at extremely low interest rates. And we can use these $900,000 for affordable housing projects that are desperately needed in our community.
Well, it is interesting, since we did have that meeting, I believe the building cost now is up at $680 a square foot. It's 28 million. We're talking about taking down Royal Park for 2.6 million for parking. And then there's also a parking structure that may cost, I think, about 5.5 million. We're adding a health campus in Redmond, which is, what is that, like eight million? Are we up at eight million, Kristi? Something like that. Anyway, you know, there's a lot of things that we're spending money on. And what if something, what if our, as you saw, the, the consumer price index today went up 5.4%? There are a lot of things that are happening outside of Deschutes County right now that could, could honestly impact us. And I think we need to look at the entire picture and the entire 195, 198,000 people that live here. And what is it that is truly our responsibility?
We should absolutely be asking ourselves what the cost of waiting to do things is. And I would ask my colleagues who were on the commission before me, why we arrived at the date, you know, this spring, when we were awarded those two judges without a design for the courthouse expansion project? If that had been completed earlier, courthouse expansion that we all know has been needed for maybe decades. If we had arrived at that point with a design, we could be under construction right now. But we did not arrive at that point. And why? Because the prior commission did not see fit to set things in place to be ready, to be construction-ready when the time came. So, yes, there is absolutely cost to waiting longer to do this project. But before anyone talks, anyone says that, that my ideas are impacting us in terms of, you know, costs associated with waiting, I just want to remind everyone that this project could be under construction right now.
Oh, I did want to add something to the judges. We truly needed three judges. We, we were awarded two judges. And the unique factor is that no other county in the state was awarded a single judge. So, you know, would we have known at that point in time what was going to happen with the state? The fact that, you know, I'm just feeling very fortunate that we are going to have two additional judges. I know it will be making a difference with our judicial community.
So I absolutely support starter home opportunities. As I say, I think philosophically, I do support the fact that our urban growth boundary expansion from 2008 in the City of Bend took too long in the statewide land use system. And now we're really paying the price for that. So I'd trace it back to that a little bit. Also, when we do this sale, it's going to be a non-taxable parcel after we do this sale. So then it's not going back on the market. That was a choice, you know, that, that's another part of this choice is when we give it to Housing Works, they're going to do great things. I absolutely support this project. But it comes, it becomes a non-taxable parcel. We haven't been paying taxes on it currently, but in the future, it could have been a taxable parcel also. It is a, just a, you know, a very public valuable piece of land. And we know that we can invest those dollars in the needs of growth across the whole county for everybody, inside and outside of Bend also. Recently, we spent $5 million on a couple of buildings in Redmond. I mean, we're spending millions at a time to help manage the growth. This is just a wonderful opportunity. And as I say, don't come to the same conclusion that we should leave those dollars. And, and that's a second level transaction, you know, from our point of view, this is Housing Works coming and offering close to a fair market value for this. So then we hear the second level is that this, the majority of these funds are coming from the City of Bend. So that's really what we're talking about, is the second level transaction, not even directly with the City of Bend. So, I mean, it looks like we will be divided. You know, thank you very much for providing those facts.
I just want, you tried to make a lot of points there. I'd just like to speak to the first one about land supply and urban growth boundaries. The fact is that the land that we have within urban growth boundaries is not being built out because of, you know, not because there's not land supply available, but because we do not have adequate infrastructure in place. Things like, you know, if, if land supply was the key constraint, why isn't Redmond completely built out within their, their urban growth boundary? It's because of infrastructure. So blaming our affordable housing challenges on land supply considerations tied to the state land use planning system is a distraction from the problem. The problem is that we do not have enough money to build infrastructure and to build affordable housing. And these $900,000 could be used to bridge that gap a little bit. And like I said, we've seen, we've seen from the investments that have been made by the City of Bend Affordable Housing Committee, how a few hundred thousand dollars can leverage hundreds of units of affordable housing. So given the, the, the crisis that our community is facing, the starvation of workers for the private sector, for the public sector, for nonprofits, this is, this is the critical investment need of our community right now. The courthouse is a community need that we are most directly responsible for. But affordable housing is a community need that we are also responsible for. So if we, yeah, I mean, this is probably going to be a two-to-one vote, and that's fine. But I'm glad that we've been able to have this discussion and that the community has been able to, to watch it.
Thank you very much. So this is item number one, our order number.
I move board signature for order number 2021-049, authorizing the Deschutes County property manager to execute the documents as so decided with the sale of county-owned property located at the northeast corner of Northeast 27th Street and Northeast Connors Avenue, Bend.
And I'll second it. Is there any other discussion? To say thank you very much for the discussion. At this time, a call for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And Chair votes yes. So this is consent agenda, item number four, consideration of board approval of Deschutes County Employee Benefits Plan. Commissioner Dare, did you have?
Yes, I did. I had a question. Normally, in the past, historically, we have had a meeting with the county commissioners where we've gone through the changes of the plan. And I don't remember that we had that meeting. It was like a workshop, you know, when we used to meet on Mondays and we went through everything. So my question is, item number five, the HR staff recommended keeping the current language as our plan meets the requirements under RHA due to the grandfather status. And yet, this plan had been changed from that. Is it not?
No. So currently, our plan does qualify for the grandfathering status with our existing language.
It does.
It does. And so that is the recommendation that has gone forward, is no changes to the plan. And we will still continue to qualify for that grandfathering status. Eback did take a vote, nine, four, four against, and two abstaining in support of removing the exclusion and adding that benefit into covered services, which would, which would be a change then to the plan. And then would remove the grandfathering status and would be required to cover.
But we're not doing that.
That, that's the board's decision. So we have HR staff made a recommendation and then Eback has made a recommendation as well.
Okay. So by approving this document at this moment in time, which, which one are we approving then? The HR staff recommendation?
That is where I actually would need direction.
Okay. All right. So how, then what could we do if this was on consent and we were approving this without talking about it? What was the decision going to be then?
I apologize that it being added to consent, consent was not something that I was aware of until it occurred. So going forward, we will make sure that that is not on consent and that we do have those discussions. We, we did offer to be present for any one-on-ones if people had questions. But we can definitely, moving forward, make sure that it comes to a Monday meeting and then be considered afterwards. That, that would work.
Yeah. Commissioner, do you want to kind of proceed with discussion today or?
Well, I don't know what's better, but I, I, I just would prefer to stay with the HR staff recommendation of keeping the current language.
And is, and that's the one item?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So that would give guidance to the specific plan. And we do have a choice we can make, put direction to this today. Any thoughts, Commissioner Chang? Are we ready for this today? I guess is where I'm at. Do you want to, do you want to finalize it with that right now?
What kind of a timeline are we under?
We, you know, we probably can bring this back next week if needed, if additional discussion is needed on it for a decision. But that would be, we, we would like to have the decision part in the beginning of November when we start open enrollment.
Okay.
I guess I, I would, in terms of discussion, I would like to understand what is, you know, what components of this plan the Board of Commissioners wants to unpack and, and deliberate on. I mean, I, I see, I, I see the items in this plan as, as things that I would actually like to delegate to the county administrator to make decisions about. There, there are a lot of things that we look at that I don't, I don't feel the, that board deliberation adds a lot of value to.
Well, so yeah, let's bring this back. I mean, I'm, I'm starting to see that now. Let's do a little bit more homework on this. And then also, you know, in the big picture, I mean, this is a self-funded healthcare system at Deschutes County. So, I mean, that's an interesting concept where the Board of Commissioners, representing the healthcare plan, the employees of Deschutes County, plus COIC and Blackbeet Ranch now too, right? So we've got quite a few covered lies when you think of it. So yeah, maybe let's do our homework on this whole project. We can bring it back in the next available meeting and get a little bit deeper into this.
Before month end.
Before month end.
Correct. So, so just to clarify, bringing this back to a Monday meeting for this session or offer?
Or it could be one-on-one meetings too. Do you want to do our homework on that separate?
Doesn't matter.
Well, let's do maybe both.
I don't, I don't have a whole lot of questions about this. I, I read the plan and, and I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
So, yeah, prepare for another board meeting on this then.
Okay. If you can put it on the Monday agenda, perhaps, that would be appropriate. And then, then we'll have a decision there.
Okay. Thank you.
There we go. Okay. So that was item number four from consent agenda. At this time, item number eight, presentation report on housing shortage study. So this is from our Ben Chamber Director, Katie Brooks. And Katie, thank you for joining us. I saw you joined us a little early, so you got to see a few topics right before yours.
I did. Thank you so much for having me today, Commissioner. I greatly appreciate the chance to share with you our latest work on the housing shortage in Bend specifically. We commissioned a, a survey and are launching an initiative on several fronts to try and figure out how to address the housing shortage here in Bend, which also leads out into the rest of central Oregon in varying degrees. And I would like to share with you now, I think I can share my screen, this presentation. Can everybody see that?
Yes. Yes.
Yep. Good. So I want to start by saying, this is really Bend-specific, and obviously Bend is in Deschutes County, but I just wanted to start by saying it also, that the public input is going to vary, depend on where, where in the county that you're doing this survey. So I'll get into a little bit of the specifics of who we asked and, and the methodology here in just a minute. So why is the Ben Chamber taking on a housing issue? So I, I talk to folks pretty much daily, if not weekly several times, about the shortage of workforce. And there have been a lot of reasons for the workforce shortage, but you will hear over and over and over again, one of the top reasons is because people cannot afford to live here anymore. And there's a very specific segment of folks that can't afford to live here. And there's another segment of folks that earn a little bit more, who just can't find a place because there's not enough inventory. And we've all been experiencing this in Deschutes County here, especially the last year since COVID hit. So the problem is, obviously, it's high cost and a shortage of inventory. And there are consequences when there isn't enough housing in a community, especially ones within Deschutes County, that relies so much on our aesthetic and our, our tourism business, and now a growing and diversifying workforce that is, and employers that are looking for folks to work here, when we're becoming more and more insular because the inventory has gone down so severely in the past several years. So the consequences is, we're exclusive instead of inclusive. And what I mean by that is, every way you can think about that, as far as diversity, equity, inclusion, but also really just having enough people to work in the restaurants, enough people to work as healthcare workers, et cetera. And when people start to move out away from where they work, they lose time with their family, they add transportation costs, they add congestion and cost to cities and counties on road wear and tear, et cetera, et cetera. And we think it's a threat to the economy. So, pretty obvious solution, let's build some more housing. The strategy is, as a result of this survey, we really asked the Bend community, how do we get ourselves out of here? And the buildup, build in and build out is something I'm going to get to here in a moment. It is basically, there are several tools at our disposal to add inventory, some more quickly than others, and we need them all. So push all the buttons at the same time. So what that means is a lot more private investment that's incentivized by fast action by the city, by the county, by all parties involved, that equals more supply and affordability as soon as we can get it to happen. And this, in your world, looks like planning, permitting, engagement, policy, and approval decisions. So the benefits of being able to rapidly add more housing and try and catch up with our deficit is an inclusive community and an economy that has a better workforce. Support employees and workforce because they have a place to live. New neighborhood districts are being developed, especially here in Bend. Central District is the one that comes to mind for me quite often, in a very different urban environment than we're used to seeing in Deschutes County, and certainly in Bend as well. Thoughtful community planning that is steered by public officials and staff that invites affordable and mid-market housing. And when I say mid-market, I mean AMI, average median household income of about 80% to about 150% of AMI. So in Deschutes County, and specifically in Bend, our AMI is around $80,000. So you can't afford to buy a house for $80,000. You are barely affording to rent a place for $80,000 a year. And the, the most significant feature of this group of folks is these are teachers and healthcare workers and firefighters, and really core essential jobs in our communities, who used to in the past be able to afford a house or a place to live. And they've been priced out in the market, and it's generating a workforce hole that's dangerous for many, many reasons, for the economy, for our community, and our health. We also get efficient commuting because people can live and work close together, and we can attract new talent, new entrepreneurs, and grow the economy. So that's my prelude. And the Bend Public Opinion Survey is, is something that we want to use as a tool to start a conversation about what tools can, is, what tools is there an appetite for here in Bend? So we interviewed 250 likely voters. So this is a poll. We use GS Strategy Group. They've done polls for many, many folks here in central Oregon and all across Pacific Northwest. They're highly regarded. The reason why we picked 250 is because we could get a plus-minus error of 6.19%, which is statistically pretty solid. Did this with our own money and the generous support of Ben Broadband and Visit Bend. But to get, usually what we do is get maybe 400, 350, when we're doing polls for campaigns and that sort. We saw it only brought the number down to 4%. And, and so I just wanted to take that on upfront. For, for efficiency's sake, we went with a 250 sample because it was coming out of our budget.
So Katie?
Here's what the profile looked like.
Pardon me.
So we tried to get a lot of different ages.
Katie, pardon me.
Yes.
So just a little bit of discussion, you know, when I looked at the slides, I was kind of shocked seeing, you know, the favorable, unfavorable, Democratic, independent, and GOP. So very, you know, just kind of comes off as political. So my, my, a little bit of feedback is, when I hear from a chamber director, man, I'd love to hear the words "small businesses want" or "business industry wants" instead of the voters. So just a little bit of feedback, you know, as I say, as I was looking through this, I'm like, oh, you know, having the content being Democrat, independent, Republican is different than, you know, small business owners and residents of the area. So as I say, a little bit of feedback.
It was just one of the ways that the, that the, the survey population was broken down. I mean, you know, they, you know, you can see here, there's, there's, you know, ideology, the way that people get news and info, age groups, you know, it's, it's just one way that, that the, the people who were surveyed were, was broken down. It wasn't exclusively about their, their partisan leanings.
Yep. And, and Commissioner Devone, I think that's a really good point. We actually debated it a lot. And what we decided to do was, these are folks who weigh in on policy decisions by electing people and voting on bond measures and that sort of thing. So what we had in the back of our minds was, okay, if there's ever something that goes back to the voters, this is information that we wanted to know. Ben Chamber is also nonpartisan, just for the record. We serve a wide variety of, of businesses. What we have found, though, is that there is an ideology, I feel like the ideology is, is really, really relevant because it shows what is happening in our community. And it's really important to keep tabs on how people are thinking. And that's really what we were after. But I do, I accept that, that observation, and, and just want to say, yeah, we, we had the same debate.
Well, that's great.
And also, we're, we're planning on following up with a employer-only survey that will have nothing to do with politics and be 100% focused on asking employers very specific questions in order to engage them in the next steps that I'm going to share with you.
Well, and thank you very much for that conversation. I was just pointing out that, you know, as I flip through it, I'm like, oh, hey, look at this. And it's very engaging when you read it, obviously, but, you know, just from a chamber, I'm like, oh, what, what's businesses' point of view? So maybe, you know, if business is scoping out the politics, I guess that's the message here.
Yep. So gender 50/50, years lived in the area. We thought that was a really relevant piece because our observation has been that in the past, this has really influenced how we look at ourselves as a city and as a community, and how growth has impacted folks as individuals. And you can read the rest there. We also asked, so is it okay if we get into this?
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, when a chamber enters into an initiative, we have to have, to your point, Commissioner Devone, that overlapping interest. That interest is, are employers a group of folks that should be getting into this? And overwhelmingly, well, we, we scored pretty high on, on being more involved in housing as an issue. You folks did really well as well. So did the city of, of Bend, city council. So I think it's a really interesting trifecta here, where private sector and public sector can collaborate to overcome something that's going to take all of us to fix. So again, when we, we told folks what it is we wanted to do as far as engaging employers, the community is making that direct connection between the economy and the housing crisis. And that's the point of this slide. So growth, no surprise, folks in Bend, 78%. I think this number is frankly going up, are really thinking that we're growing too fast, and we think housing is the reason, one of the major reasons why. And this is why we know that. We asked folks, so growth isn't all bad. So what do you see as a positive thing? More diversity and cultural vibrancy came up on top. Jobs and economic growth, pretty much a staple. Rising property values isn't all bad if you're a homeowner, and you can see the rest there. And the negatives, conversely, is rising housing costs, traffic congestion, and rising economic inequality, et cetera. Not a lot of surprises there, but I think these are really telling of what's on folks' mind. So what you're hearing out there, what I'm hearing out there is true. 67% of those folks who we interviewed have either had to leave Bend or know somebody who hasn't moved here at all. And so this is what the Gallatin Group, our public affairs group that helped us with this survey says is the bellwether. This is probably the most important slide because it tells US County Commission, and it tells our city council even more specifically, this is an emergency. When you have 67% of your folks saying, yeah, I'm, I know somebody, or I have had to leave, and because, and it's directly related to housing costs, that's a very big number. So this was the surprise because we thought that owning a, a home was probably going to come out on top as the most talked-about issue. But when we asked, the biggest housing problem facing in Bend, 58% said, no, it's rising rents. Because we feel they, they gave us that input, put because they see an immediate need, and they see a workforce strata that is a big gaping hole in Bend and Deschutes County that really realistically can't get into the housing market, not now. And yet, we want them to be here. So we need to create rental opportunities so they can afford to live in a place with their family or on their own, whatever the situation is, and have a job and a place to work here.
Katie, one, one note on that. I remember during the last recession, so, you know, eight, 10 years ago, there was an economist, I think it was an Edco event, and it was just mentioned in passing, and it was a really interesting statistic. It was the percentage of renters opposed to ownership in, in the United States of America, probably was the slide he was showing. But there's a crossover between 60 and 70%, you know. So that tells you that 30 to 35% of people in, traditionally, over 100-year period or something, you know, these aren't specifics, but this was the message, 30, 35% of people need that either, you know, short-term or long-term rental opportunity. And if, if your community doesn't have that 30, 35% rental, it's, you know, it's maybe too many single-family homes. And I don't know what the number is here right now, but it was just a point. I just remember hearing about that. So rising rents is, is the information here. People are looking just for somewhere to, to rent, not even to buy, you know, a subset of people are.
And, I mean, that's an, that's an interesting thing to, to dig into because we've seen hundreds and hundreds of rental apartment units built in our, in, in Bend in the last couple of years. I'm, I'm, I mean, Katie, do you have any insights on whether that, these, whether these numbers are better now than they were before, or, you know, it's, it's still getting worse?
That'd be an interesting number to find out. And that'd be for the Community Development Department of Bend, you know, what is the percentage of single-family home, private ownership, and apartments, you know, owned by somebody, but apartments available?
Yeah. No, I, I know that the ratio of single-family home to multifamily is, the gap is decreasing. I just, you know, I don't know exactly where it is. I'm just curious how that affects people's kind of perceptions of how available rental housing is and how affordable it is.
Yeah. Well, and remember, this was after a recession, which was a housing bubble, so I'm referring to 10, 12 years ago. And it was after the fact, but it was, there was too much private ownership relative to the people that would live that lifestyle, as in the money was too easy to come by. So there was, you know, because, and I just, I know, you know, like, some people I know, they're just not going to cut the lawn or maintain a house, you know, they, they kind of need that rental and somebody else to do that. There's just a subset of people, that's their lifestyle. And it was too much homeownership at the time, you know, a dozen years ago, which was, just made the bubble insecure or whatever.
Yeah, interesting. Financing is a bad thing. Or, or lax financing is a bad thing.
Katie, I just was curious, do we know how many homes in Bend are the Airbnb, how many are allowed?
I don't know how many, but I did hear a statistic that 30% of the homes in Bend are short-term rentals.
30% are short-term? Okay. And I don't want to tell someone, I don't want to tell someone that's purchased a home that they can't do that. But 30% is, is a big number. So clearly, I'm sure we must be short of houses for the people that need to work here and be at our restaurants and be at, you know, be out there, you know, be working at our hospital.
That's a whole new scenario. It takes that many units off, off from just private.
If we want to, if we want to stimulate the city of Bend to revisit their short-term, their short-term rental policy, we could initiate a short-term rental policy for the county. Because it is, there are a lot of, there are a lot of homes in, you know, outside of our incorporated cities that are being used as short-term rentals as well. And it all, it all affects the, the available housing stock for long-term renters.
You got us going here, Katie.
Well, the good news is, that's why I'm so happy Senate Bill 391 passed. And if we can be ready for that with the up to 900 square foot accessory dwelling units in the county, you know, that, that could be an enormous relief to the pressure that we're feeling for the lack of housing. So that's something the county is clearly doing and working on, and I appreciate that.
But to go back to the original point, I, I think it's a great thing to, to take a, a closer look at short-term rental policy. I, I know there are communities like the City of Hood River that took a much more restrictive approach to short-term rentals that, you know, have, have seen really substantial gains in long-term rental stock as a result of that. And, you know, the city of Bend basically has a density cap on, on short-term rentals, which, you know, it, it prevents you from having three short-term rentals on one street, but I, I don't think it's, I, I don't think it really controls the numbers very much.
Good discussion.
Really good conversation. And I, I don't, one point I did want to make was that this is the first survey that we've done, and you folks have had really good conversation on many different issues around this question. This question is more a perceptive one of, do you think we need lower rents, or do you think we need more folks that can own a home? Which is different than asking, would you rather?
Right.
Rent or own? We do plan on doing this survey for at least a, a few more years and track trends as we go, especially since so, so much change is going to be happening in certain areas of Bend as far as density and urban growth and that sort of thing. I think it's worth tracking over time just to see how people are, are assimilating this, this change. Are, are you ready for me to go on?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the solutions are build-in, build-up, build-out. So we ask folks just flat out the question you see on your screen. So are you good with maybe increasing height? We also ask our, maybe increasing density. And what you see is folks saying, whoa, that's a lot of change. 53% is above the 50/50. 53% is above the 50-50 mark, but obviously not much, especially with the plus-minus 6%. So folks are not real happy, again, with what's going on, going back to the 78% of the folks who told us, look, we're uncomfortable with how fast we're growing. But look what happens when we start to tell the story of what we mean by very specific growth. So we use the example of the Central District in Bend as a place where we're going to condense that growth, build multifamily housing, build mixed-use, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to be walkable, it's just going to be a new kind of development for Bend. Support went up to 68%. That's almost 70% of folks saying, yep, that's what we want, and we see that as a way out of this situation. They're not necessarily seeing this as out of the situation in every neighborhood in Bend, but when you specifically say, here's our thoughtful planning for this particular place, there was a lot more support. People get it.
So a question real quick. So the previous slide said, what, you know, would you, would you mind seeing six-story buildings, but the Central District does have that authority now?
Correct.
Okay, so there's a sub, yeah, that area already is authorized for six stories.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. So we also asked a question about the UGB expansion, and there is some support there for it. Again, it's not super robust, but I think people get the fact that you're going to need to plan for more housing, obviously, including single-family. And to expand the urban growth boundary and get that process going is something I think they're willing to entertain. I also know that a lot of stuff has to happen before you can begin this process, or as you begin the process, as far as density and some of the requirements within the City of Bend that were made the last time we expanded the UGB. So I think that thoughtful expansion and where it fits in the overall build-in, build-out, or build-up, build-in, build-out, I think that folks can see the context and the need for it eventually. So mixed feeling about change. We still think that change is a bad thing, and this is a human experience, obviously. And we think that this has a lot to do with just the actual physical and community impacts that are occurring. So when we asked them more specifically, so you have mixed feelings about change. So when you think about Bend, are we a small town or are we mid-city? And we're just barely eking out as still being a small town. The last census was over 100,000, which qualifies us technically as a city. But I think this is really relevant because Bend and probably Redmond one day is going to be looking at kind of a identity crisis as we have to deal with some really hard stuff that comes with a lot more folks in our region, and how that actually changes the dynamic of your community. And I think folks like to think of Bend and Central Oregon as a place that is still a small town. When you look at the data, how, what their age is and how many years in Bend, there's really some telling information here. The younger you are, for example, the more you think you're a city. And the longer you've been here, the more you think that we're a small town. So what does all of this mean? So there are several observations that we've been able to make from this data. Businesses and local governments enjoy credibility to lead on this issue. The depth of growth concerns are a real serious opportunity and a need to be fixed and to demonstrate, to show progress, to demonstrate progress. Housing costs are a top barrier to keeping and attracting employers and employees. Rising rents more urgent, and broad voter support for building in up and out. So what we're going to do at the chamber, we're already working with groups of folks to build a Coalition for Action. We're going to work more closely with employers to bring their voices to the table for different policy decisions, and also for private sector solutions. Can we, for example, match local employers with investors and developers and actually get some actual projects in the ground as an investment for employees? We want to drive that mid-market housing by doing that, by using different private-public-blended funds, but mostly private, to get these things built sooner rather than later, and advocate and support for needed city and county actions. So we feel there are several things that you folks can do, and definitely City of Bend can do. Accelerating construction of the Central District is something we're spending a lot of time on with the City of Bend specifically. They adopted House Bill 2001 and Senate Bill 458, two different levels. 2001 allows for more density, Senate 458 allows for even micro-density in certain areas, just to get more housing supply on the ground, want it to be done thoughtfully, build new mixed-use areas in town like the Central District, the South area of town and the new annexed area around Stevens Road. Begin the process of expanding the UGB because we know it's going to take at least 10 years to get there, but we've got a lot of work to do in between. And explore, this is where you come in, border areas that are in the UGB that might be worth developing for affordable housing, like the first thing that you folks talked about this morning, or other types of mixed-use development, like the transit-oriented affordable housing projects that we've been talking about over the last several years. Great opportunities. And Commissioner Adair, to your point, building the ADUs in rural areas and allowing that legislation to be implemented in Deschutes County, we think will also help. So that is my presentation. Any other thoughts or questions, or anything I can do for you?
Thank you very much. Very thought-provoking. As I say, we've, that was a great discussion back and forth also.
I have a question or two. Katie, I am, the UGB expansion process is historically a city-led process, which the county plays an active role in supporting, and I think that that's an appropriate way for that to work. I would be curious whether the Chamber has specific thoughts on, you know, timeline and parameters for what the next UGB expansion looks like for the City of Bend? There have been a number of questions kicked around about whether there should be an urban area reserve incorporated or not, included or not, and just, you know, curious if there's any, if there's kind of a policy vision right now, or, you know, to be determined.
I think it's really early. Commissioner Chang, what I do know is that we aren't ready, and that there are some commitments that were made in the 2016 expansion for density that the City of Bend has to deliver on. If they don't, the DLCD probably won't grant any kind of expansion anyway. So there's progress that has to be made. We believe that you got to get the process started, and there are requirements to doing that as far as your growth and some state requirements that the city has to go through. But I think that the next UGB, we hadn't done urban growth boundary expansion for, at all, I don't think, in Bend. So that 2016 expansion was a very big one. I suspect that future ones will be more planned as far as density goes, and a lot more modest than the last time we went out. But our position at this point is, there's work to be done first, and that includes building Central District and other places that are going to provide that density that we committed ourselves to in the last round.
Thanks.
So that's really interesting. It just kind of got me thinking here. So yeah, 2006 expansion, five years later is basically where we're at right now, or going, just past five years even probably. The urban reserve concept is something with it, I just think of it as, the people of Bend could and should understand some of this. You know, we live in a statewide growth management system. You know, what's going to be approved and what's not going to be approved from above is kind of the concept here when you say DLCD or LCDC, which is fine, you know, as I say, there's opportunities there. But really scoping on an urban reserve effort may be the interesting thing there. I know that Redmond did that years ago, and Nick Lelac was involved, but Redmond did that years ago, and it just reduces all the future conflict because you kind of know where you're going to grow into. So that may be a good opportunity. And I haven't talked to the planning staff of the City of Bend on this, but just letting folks know that in the City of Bend, hopefully there's a kind of a common knowledge about how growth could happen, I guess, is would be a great effort out there.
I just wanted to say, Katie, the key word of this seems to be build. Build up, build in, and build out. And, you know, we really do need to look at our building, our, you know, our construction, private industry, who is doing what, and what are they, you know, what are they planning on? I know, you know, the Murphy Road apartment building that we had looked at, what, a couple years ago, that's, you know, coming in, I mean, there's, I would really like to see, like, the apartment number for the city and see, okay, what is it, what is it today, and what is it projected, you know, what's going to happen in the next two years? And it seems like building is the key. You know, it's not just Bend. I heard, one of my relatives in Austin sold their house because they were commuting, you know, that hour and a half one way, so they sold their house. Well, they can't find anything, they're on the second-floor apartment with two Australian shepherds. So I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, yeah, the commute is really bad, but now they're in a second-floor apartment, and that, that's not really ideal for their life either. So, yeah, building truly is the answer, and hopefully building costs will start, you know, continue to come down.
Great. Well, great presentation. You sure got us engaged on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Have a great day. So at this time, how about we move item number nine to after the COVID update? I'm sure we can be that flexible at this time. So number 10 will be COVID-19 update from our health, health department. I was able to be on KBND radio this morning, and I just mentioned, we do have a COVID update every other week from, from your local professionals, you know, so the local public health authority with our professionals in the health department. And this is a great reference point for everybody in the community to see the facts on the ground locally. So thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioners. Am I loud and clear?
Yes.
Streaming? And we're streaming on Facebook? Translation, everything set?
Oh, so then we missed those real positive comments to start for the Facebook Live, but we'll go from there.
Right. Would you like to repeat some?
Well, as I say, you know, this is important. What I see in the community is, you know, people, it's a disconcerting time, you know, who do you believe, what information? You could search the internet for conflicting information, going down two whole paths of, you know, conclusions or whatever it would be. So, but this is, you know, local public health authority with our professional staff, thank you very much for joining us today, is the local reference point for the facts on the ground, for the population of Central Oregon, you know, thinking of the hospital system, but also the 200,000, you know, citizens and members of our community.
You know, and I'm actually, I want to say this now. I'm hearing from people in the community that are really unsure of what they should be doing if they are given a COVID-positive diagnosis. There's got to be, you know, okay, they get the test and they're told they're positive, but who follows up with someone who doesn't have an internist, doesn't have a doctor? Who gives them information? I was told by someone that perhaps we should mail something out to the community. So hey, if you have the positive diagnosis, not everybody is on the internet. We just lost a dear person in South County that we shouldn't have lost. And I truly want people to know what it is that you should be doing if you have that positive diagnosis. We don't want you to end up in the hospital. I know we've been promoting monoclonal, everybody still doesn't know about that, but there are other things too, you know, the C, the D, and the zinc. But it's very specific which C you take, which D you take, which vitamin D, vitamin C, and zinc. So I really think we need to step up with our public education, and not just on this call, but somewhere bigger.
In response to the last two comments, I guess I'd just like to say that the county does a tremendous amount of public education. We offer this opportunity every, you know, at this point, every two weeks for people to actually get real information. That is not the random misinformation that is all over the internet that is preventing people from taking preventative measures to prevent themselves from getting COVID, which is preventing them from, you know, using the appropriate treatments to, you know, to get, you know, to treat COVID if they, if they get it. The issue is not that there is not enough information out there. The information, the issue is that there's so much misinformation out there that muddies the waters. And so until we, until we can reach a point where people who want to, you know, are looking for misinformation, until we reach a point where we can redirect those people to accurate, science-based resources for information, like, it's, it's not a matter of quantity, it's a matter of the filters that people are putting up and using.
Yeah. So Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, just a very brief answer to the first question from one of our Commissioners, and that is that anyone, the short answer to your question, Commissioner, is that anyone that has a COVID diagnosis should see their primary care provider, or if they don't have one or record, then seek out a licensed primary care provider to discuss this and to be followed. And there's, of course, through our, there's a new oral drug, variety of other options. So I think that's, that's the short answer. Thanks.
So Commissioners, good morning. For the record, my name is Nahat Sadra Zadi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. Commissioner, there, I just want to start off by saying I'm sorry about the loss of a dear person in South County. That is certainly not the kind of news we want to hear, and I'm really sorry for that loss. So, and I think some of the specifics to your question probably will be addressed throughout the presentation, especially Emily, as she's covering the Epi side of it, and might provide more information on that. So let me just start off by thanking you for inviting us, to giving us this platform to share the facts that we know of, the latest developments with you and our public. So thank you for this opportunity, and thanks for inviting us. Many thanks to Jesse Turpstra for sharing and helping us with the data analysis. We don't have an epidemiologist right now for communicable diseases and COVID, and Jesse has really stepped up to support us during this period, so many thanks to her. Commissioners, we have a great starting lineup for you today with Emily Freeland, who is our supervisor for COVID response and resilience. We have Crystal Savi, who's our supervisor for vaccine planning and delivery, and Mike Johnson from St. Charles, who we're trying to, who's basically part of our community and essentially Health Services. We have taken over. So thank you to our colleagues for joining us for this. Just a couple of points, just to set the stage for us. You will hear soon, and the public will hear soon, that cases are starting to drop. We're still kind of a little bit reluctant and a little bit unsure exactly what that means. We don't think there is just one reason contributing to this. We have some reasonable guesses as to what might be happening. Perhaps this variant has burned through the population and it's losing its steam. It could be that our population immunity has increased, whether through vaccination, infection, or reinfection. It could be that people are adhering to mitigation or preventive measures more so than they did before. It could be multiple reasons contributing to this. But that's one part of the presentation you're going to hear about. You're also going to hear about the experiences and the facts and the data coming out of the medical system. St. Charles and Mike Johnson will be presenting. St. Charles and Mike Johnson will be presenting that and giving us a very insightful view of what's going on in that system. And finally, you're going to hear about the vaccination support and rollout throughout the community and with Health Services, especially around booster doses. One thing I want to probably mention at the very beginning is that if people are fully vaccinated, so with Moderna, with Pfizer, with J&amp;J, we are well protected against severe diseases and death already. So that's really important to keep in mind. People who are getting admitted to the hospital are not the ones who are missing out on their booster doses. They're the ones who haven't been vaccinated or fully vaccinated. So as our community members start to make appointments, reach out to primary providers, primary care providers, or pharmacies, or show up at our clinics, I want them to just keep in mind that they're well protected already, that to please remain patient and gracious as we try to find community solutions to address the needs out there. So with that said, I'm going to give the score to my colleague Emily, and I'm going to share my screen with you as well. So Emily, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. As Nahad mentioned, my name is Emily Freeland, and I'm the COVID Response and Recovery Supervisor. So I'm going to go over a little bit of the data, so the epidemiological data that we have this week. So the first thing that most people will notice at looking at this graph is that our number of cases last week has dropped pretty significantly from the weeks prior, where we were seeing sort of a plateau around 900 cases, and last week, we were at 691. So although that's good news, you know, we all, like Nahad said, want to take a breath and think there's a lot of reasons this could be happening, and, you know, it's no reason to let up with our prevention and our risk assessment that we're still in a pretty high-risk situation. The number 691 feels lower, but if we look at our previous surges over the last holiday, like last Christmas, New Year's kind of time, as well as in the spring, we had a pretty significant surge, this still exceeds that pretty significantly. So when we're thinking about moving forward, we want to make sure that our community members are aware and do have that proper education about what they should do if they're diagnosed or if they feel like they've been exposed, which is a lot of, you know, most of our response and recovery is around containment and education and making sure people have correct information. Next slide, please. So if we look at the case rates by age group and break this down week over week, we are seeing declines in the case rate. So this is per 10,000 of population, how many cases we're seeing, especially in the older age groups, which is really important because those are our most susceptible and likely to have severe outcomes. The only place that we did see an increase from the week prior, and again, this is a rate by age group, was in the 18 and 19-year-olds, where we saw a slight uptick from the weeks prior. Next slide. So if we look at the numbers by deaths by age group, compare that to the number of cases, we can see a pretty inverse relationship. So this is our total number of cases over the pandemic, and the total number in blue, and then the total number of deaths as that gray line there. And you see that, you know, under 40, we haven't had any deaths in Deschutes County. But this significantly increases to 69 deaths in the 80-plus, which corresponds to a lower number of cases, which is, again, it's a rate. So, next slide, please. So if we look at our death reports by month, we can see that we had this highest number of deaths of 23 per month in the month of January of 21. This has declined, where our numbers declined, and then we are seeing an uptick again, which is something we've talked about in previous reports, as well as letting you know that St. Charles had purchased that morgue truck to help, you know, with this surge in deaths that we have seen. So in September, we saw 13 deaths in Deschutes County due to COVID, and so far in October, so we're only about halfway through the month, we've already seen 17. So some of these might not exactly jive with what St. Charles had. This is, again, reports by month, not when the death occurred necessarily. Next slide. So if we look at vaccinations per age group, we also see sort of the inverse relationship to that previous graph where we looked at cases by age group. So we have the lower number of vaccination percentage in the younger age groups and higher in the older age groups, and then we see more cases in younger age groups. And again, 12- to 17-year-olds are eligible, but those younger children are not, and they're not represented here because clearly that percentage would be zero. Moving forward at the end of this month and probably into next month, we're looking at the possibility that Pfizer vaccine will be approved for those younger aged groups. We don't know exactly when that will happen, but that will certainly be a part of our planning, and we are looking at surge planning for that demand that we'll see. Next slide, please. So as far as case follow-up, this goes back to Commissioner Dare's point about making sure that we are reaching out and educating those cases that are diagnosed. So in the state of Oregon, if a COVID-19 case is diagnosed and a test has been done through a certified lab, so that's almost, aside from home tests that someone buys over the counter, if they're going to any lab and getting tested, that is required to be reported to the local health authority. So that's where these numbers come from and where our number of cases come from. You can see that in the last weeks, we have been able to reach out to 86% of the cases within 24 hours of the case report. We do reach out to all the cases eventually, you know, we get to every single case, but some of those take a little longer. And what that means is we do a call to the case, and we educate them on what they need to do to protect their friends and family members from spreading this. Our case investigators are highly trained, as Commissioner DeBonne can probably speak to, as he sat through some of those case investigations. And we work to connect them with supports, either wraparound supports, or, you know, coach them if they're feeling really sick or having difficulty breathing, what they should do as far as going to the hospital. We let them know about monoclonal antibodies and other treatments that are available. So that's all part of this case investigation process, and probably the most important thing that we can do is share this correct information. Part of this process is also just a reminder, you know, identifying if they were on site at school or at their workplace while they were contagious, and then following up with the businesses, if that's possible, to make sure that the employer also knows, or the school, how to let people know what that risk is, and that they also should potentially be tested and when that testing should occur.
Emily, can I just ask about this graph? So this is a, the cases investigated within 24 hours, it looks like we've made substantial improvements from just a few weeks ago or a month ago, when, you know, just the massive numbers of Delta-fueled surge cases were, you know, were keeping us from getting to more people within 24 hours. I was just curious whether the improvement in percentage is due to us getting more capacity online, or whether it's because there are less cases now, so it's possible with the capacity that we have to keep up better, or, you know, what the explanation would be?
So it's a combination of things. Clearly, our decrease in cases is helpful, right? It's easier to get to 691 cases than over 1,000 cases and make those calls. But additionally, we have brought on more support. So we have trained new case investigators that are able to take their own cases at this point, and that's certainly helping with our capacity. The second part of that is we've had sort of a surge protocol where we're utilizing other county staff to help make these calls in a more abbreviated form. So it's a shorter interview, and the main thing is there, you know, educating and connecting them with services so we can make sure that the most serious, you know, cases or situations are dealt with. And so we're able to lean less on that and more on our seasoned and fully trained case investigators as we bring more of those people on board as well.
Thank you.
If I may, just thank and acknowledge Nick Lillak. I think in his first few days, he promptly communicated with all county staff for additional support with our backlog. So thank you, Nick, and the colleagues from other county departments in rolling up your sleeves and supporting the community.
I think the last point to make is we kind of use this term backlog, but our goal is to not have a backlog, right? We don't ever want to get to a situation where we have a bunch of people that are not being called, or, you know, we're not able to educate them right away. So we really prioritize making sure that we call everyone we can as quickly as possible, and we also send out letters and other information by mail if we're not able to get a hold of people, which is part of the equation. We have to acknowledge, you know, some people don't answer their phones, or they don't call us back even when we call and try to do that education. So this last slide that, oh, not the last slide, almost, is our test results by week. So, you know, we want to make sure that there is sufficient number of testing availability in our county so that if someone is sick or feels that they've been exposed, or, you know, needs to travel, or, you know, do something social, or go to a family gathering, they're able to get that test. So we have seen, you know, pretty stable numbers, and last week, there were, you know, over 7,000 tests administered. Secondarily to that is the percent positivity. So we still have a really pretty high percent positivity, although it's dropping from the max that we saw when we also were seeing very, very high numbers. Our positivity rate is down around 10%, which feels, again, as respite, it's, you know, declining certainly, but that's much higher than we would like to see it around in that 3% to 4% range.
So I have a question here. Is there any guidance on testing? So, you know, there's, you could see, I don't feel well, maybe I should get tested. I've been exposed, and now I'm worried, I want to get tested. But what about that next kind of level of, well, is it helpful to get tested for less motivation, I guess, is my question? You know, where the general population?
Little question.
Well, yeah, no, yeah, I mean, or not. I guess what's the guidance is my point, you know, because if I, as I say, the first two scenarios are pretty clear. Okay, I think I'm sick, or I know I was exposed. But then that third scenario of, well, should I add to the numbers and find out if I am positive or not? You know, knowing that, you know, I'm thinking of a fully vaccinated person, that the possibility is low. So is there any guidance there?
So the first thing I would mention here, as far as when to get tested, is mild symptoms, we would also recommend testing. So often, we will hear from people that, oh, I just had a headache, and it's not normal for me to have a headache, but I assumed that it was nothing. Or, you know, I think early on in the spring and other times, we've talked a lot about allergies and sneezing and having those more mild symptoms, and people refraining from getting tested for several days, they expose a large number of people, probably in their most contagious period, and then later on, they go ahead and get tested and find out that it wasn't allergies, or it wasn't just a headache, that they were contagious. And they did spread it to friends and family member, which is nothing any of us want to do. So the first thing I would say is, any symptoms, we would recommend testing, and we have more and more testing options in our community. So, you know, certainly, if you're feeling sick at all, the best thing you can do is stay home and get tested so that you don't spread it inadvertently, you know, in your workplace, or at school, or wherever you go. As far as if you're not symptomatic and you want to do more like screening testing, I think that there is some availability here, although it's a little bit more complicated due to costs associated and whether or not insurance will cover those more screening-type tests. But there are more and more availability of over-the-counter tests, which is something that's been intended for screening purposes. So those are antigen-type tests, and it looks like Dr. Conway wants to say something there, but we do see that. The main thing is if you do take one of those tests, is that you do report that to the Health Department, and you can call our hotline and let us know, and then we can help guide you through where to go get tested to verify that, and additionally, how to handle that. So if people are doing more of that screening, just because they're curious type of testing, they didn't have an exposure, or they haven't traveled, any of those kind of things, we certainly recommend making sure if that does come back positive, in order to do the correct things and isolate properly, identify your close contacts properly, all of those pieces, please call the hotline and notify us of that.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Conway, it looks like you wanted to add something there.
Well, I just wanted to interject, if I understood the original question. So when Ms. Freeland's talking about screening tests, this is just for people that we would call, say, worried well, that you're generically interested, and it's worth doing if you're anxious, but actually, the accuracy of testing, if you haven't had any known exposure and don't have any symptoms, actually isn't very good. But we don't want to dissuade people from getting tested, which isn't really screening, if they believe they've been exposed. So if you think that you had a high, let's say you were on an aircraft, and somebody behind you was coughing for half the flight on the nip of your neck, and you could, you know, feel that around you, that would be a concerning exposure. So that would be a very reasonable cause to get exposed. Or if you hear from someone that's heard from us, the Health Department, that they've been infected, or that they've been among you exposed, and you're not quite sure if you or your child were around that one of those people for long enough to have been exposed, that's still a very reasonable reason to go forward and be tested. So the screening is really once more just for sort of worried well, and the problem with that is that that means you're in a probably very low-risk category, and that makes the testing results less certain as well. And it also doesn't tell you whether or not you may be infected a few days later. So I just wanted to explain that that's really only the thing that we don't press people to do. Everything else, the bias should be toward, if you're worried that you've had an exposure, if you've been named as having an exposure, et cetera, then you should go ahead and do your very best to get tested.
Well, so then it gives you the concept of, we have 7,000 people that either maybe had the sniffles, or a headache, or some kind of a reason to get tested because of their physical feeling, or they were exposed. Yeah, I'm just, you know, just trying to get a feel for it. Over time is what I'm thinking. You know, we've been doing this for a year and a half. What is, what's the guidance now, and what's the guidance going to be in the future is what I'm thinking through.
You know, one other piece of this is supply. I mean, there was a time when, you know, I was really interested in seeing kind of proactive screening at schools to support school reopening. And, you know, at that moment, you know, there were so many concerns about, you know, how much, you know, how many test kits were available, you know, on the market, that it seemed like it was a very challenging thing to pull off. But, I mean, at this moment, you know, we know that vaccine is abundantly available. Are tests also abundantly available? Should people kind of not worry about, like, oh, I don't want to take up a test, you know, if I just have a tiny little question about whether I might have COVID because it's needed somewhere else?
It's a good question, Commissioner. The answer to that is actually next. So there's a severe shortage of point-of-care rapid testing. So the highly accurate molecular tests like IDNow, or the rapid PCR test like Logic that St. Charles is using, those are in relatively short supply, and really, those are tests that we would dissuade people from seeking if they're just, as I said before, worried well, that they might have had some exposure. However, if you've had a real punitive possible exposure, named exposure, it's a perfectly reasonable thing to seek. As far as the sort of proactive screening testing you mentioned in schools and whatnot, some of the assay-based tests at school systems, like the LAMP assay, which we had communicated about before, and also with, and school district, those do not appear to be in short supply, but the supply chain may be unreliable. So it's sort of a mixed message. I think the, for people that are, once again, worried well, that you're just generically curious, one of the self-test, mail-in tests, whatnot, that does- one of the self-test, mail-in tests, whatnot, that doesn't clog up the medical care diagnostic or the public health diagnostic system would be the appropriate choice. And a number of those are being marketed currently. Many of those are moderate-accuracy lateral-flow antigen tests. There are some that are actually molecular tests that aren't the rapid point-of-care, but there doesn't appear to be a shortage of that sort of test. Emily, I don't know if you want to add to that?
No, I think that that makes sense, and OHA has rolled out several, like, screening and testing options for schools. I think some of the difficulty there is just, as with a lot of things COVID-related and health-related, it's staffing, and implementing those with having enough, you know, qualified people to, if you think about screening all the kids, what that might take can be difficult as well. So, there's numerous pieces of the testing puzzle. I would say, overall, our testing, you know, St. Charles is having, they have the drive-through testing that's pretty easily accessible at seven days a week in Bend. They're hoping to expand that potentially to other locations, but that's only, you know, they won't do travel testing, they won't do screening testing. Those are only for some symptomatic or known exposure tests, and I know that there's several of our other providers who are in the same situation. We are working to expand the availability of testing in our community, and one example that we've had going on, which is kind of a no-questions-asked test, is going on today from 9:00 to 2:00 in the parking lot, right outside the building that you're in, right there at Wall Street. So, we plan on continuing that, and then there's some other expansion plans as well to make sure that our capacity is increasing, so that, you know, there isn't this, "Should I, or should I not?", you know, "I'm not really sure what to do in this situation."
Now, I want to do a quick time check, because I think Mike has a hard stop at 11:00. At least, if I remember correctly from last week, I just want to make sure that we're able to get through the slides. So, may I have permission to proceed, and perhaps once Mike is done?
Yes, please. Good discussion, but yeah, let's proceed.
Okay. Emily, go ahead and wrap this up, and then, Mike, I'll probably give you the option of sharing your screen for your slides.
So, the last slide here is just speaking of community spread. So, this kind of relates back to that original slide, when we talked about the number of cases per week that we're seeing. So, we have 350.7 cases in the last metric week per 100,000 in population, and that puts us in this high transmission situation, which is essentially what all of, almost all of Oregon is seeing at this point. So, this really means that we should continue those preventative measures, masking, handwashing, distancing, keeping our gatherings small if possible, and just, you know, being cognizant of the fact of, when we go out in the community, there is a pretty high transmission rate, and we could be exposed with those lower, you know, lower-risk type situations, or you might get a call from the Health Department, or your entity, you know, the sports team that your kids are on, that there was an exposure, and you are going to be needing to quarantine and test and those types of things. So, I will pass it over to Mike, who can tell us about how things are going at St. Charles.
Thanks, Emily. And, Hadd, you can continue to just share your screen. Those are the same slides. Sorry about that. And, good morning, everyone. I, you know, I'm actually quite happy to say that this is the first time in a long, long time that there is a hint of any good news, and that, you know, it comes with a caveat that, you know, it's not as good as we'd like, but there is perhaps a light at the end of the tunnel. So, yeah, the cases are coming down, but it's been, like, since August 17th, since we've been consistently below 1,000 cases in a seven-day period in the central Oregon region. And, like, yesterday it was down to 994, today it's at, you know, 1,003. So, it's just coming down so slowly, and part of the reason for that is the test positivity that Emily was describing. And there are other indicators out there that typically give us some prior warning that cases are going to come down, and I think I heard Dr. Conway mention earlier this week that, you know, the wastewater testing, there was, that's not coming down like we'd like it to either. And so, because of these other indicators, it's coming down, but it's just painfully slow. Next slide, please. Here's the predictive model. We continue to update the functionality of the model. We've now incorporated some elements of the waning effects of the vaccine, as well as the waning effect of a natural immunity from somebody who's been infected but not vaccinated, and so we've adjusted to take care of those things. We also have incorporated some ways to account for the boosters, and separating those doses from individuals, so that we can keep a good count of how many people are fully vaccinated, and how many of those doses were simply the third dose or a booster. So, but you can see that it is showing that it will come down, and this is consistent with other models that I speak with other folks each week. They show everybody coming down, but our region, central Oregon, is coming down way, way slower than any other region in the state, except for a couple of little tiny regions, you know. But, and I can't explain that. I just, you know, and OHA is saying, yes, the cases are coming down quite rapidly. Well, that's because a lot of the highly populated areas around the state are coming down quite rapidly, and they kind of dwarf our smaller area, but it's, we still had 71 patients in the hospital today. So, next slide. Vaccination rates are almost stagnant. We are getting, you know, handfuls each day, but at most, they're going up by a tenth of a percent per day, and sometimes not even that. So, that's, this is kind of where we are, and until those younger age groups enter the scene, and perhaps as early as November, then we won't see really much change here. Next slide. ED visits, that we are going to recover a little bit there as well, but it's projected by the end of October that, like, we'll be in between that August and September mark. So, you know, if we continue on the same path, we'll have about 640-some ED visits, which still is, like I said, it's better, but it's just a tiny bit better. And the one metric that is not going in the right direction at all is anything having to do with our children, 18 and under. Those cases are projected to exceed what we saw in September for both hospitalizations as well as ED visits. And that, some kind of expected that because of schools back in session, but it's unfortunate, but that's what we're looking at. That is not going to recover in October like some of the other metrics. And those are not equally represented by the three different counties in our central Oregon region. So, Deschutes County is actually overperforming compared to the other two counties, but even so, they, you know, they too are going to have, you know, in Deschutes County, they're projected to exceed the pediatric numbers in October as well. So, even though they're doing better than the other two, it's kind of like being the, not quite as bad as everybody else, but if everybody is really bad, it just makes you look better. And I, these are mortalities that occur in the hospital system. And I don't really know how to put this, but this is the only other metric that's just quite sad, that we're projected to have about 51 deaths this month. So, you know, even as it stands right now, since August 1st, 47% of all the people who have died from COVID, it occurred since August 1st. So, and already in September and October, like a third, over a third of all of the deaths have occurred in the last two months. So, you know, yeah, we've been seeing a lot of patients, but the mortality rate itself is higher than it has been. And in Deschutes County residents, the mortality rate for a hospitalized patient is north of 18%. So, nearly 1 in 5 hospitalized patients from Deschutes County so far in October has died. I mean, that is, you know, two and a half times as high as it typically is. Well, no, that's not right. Almost double what it typically is.
Dr. Johnson, are any of those people that have received the monoclonal therapies before they had to, before they went into the hospital, do you have any kind of information on that?
Last, I haven't looked in the last day or two, but the last time that I did that analysis, we did have somebody that got the monoclonal antibody infusion, who was hospitalized and even went into the ICU, but we have not had a mortality of somebody who was, who has gotten that infusion. But, I mean, those, you know, and that kind of brings up a good point, that those monoclonal antibody infusions are turning out to be quite successful, but they're only given to, like, the most severe cases, the most at-risk patients. So, it's not like, "Oh, I don't need to get vaccinated, because if I go in the hospital, I'll just get an infusion and I'll be fine." It's, you know, we're only, last I checked, that we were getting like 20 a day. There are way more than that, even high-risk patients who are not getting infused. So, it's not like a silver bullet. It's a last-ditch effort, and seems to work well, but supply is short, and it's just not as available as we'd like. So, yeah, it's a good story for those who get it, but it's quite a game of rush roulette if you can't. So, but, good question.
Thank you, Mike. So, that was really great presentation. Appreciate your time. So, if there are no further questions, I'll give the floor to Crystal Sully.
Sure. Thank you, Nahad, and thank you, Dr. Johnson. Again, my name's Crystal Sully. I'm the COVID-19 Vaccine Operations Supervisor for Deschutes County Public Health. This first slide that we're looking at is reflective of what Dr. Johnson mentioned about our vaccination rates. So, we're currently hovering right at that, just under 78% for our population 18 and over. Let me go to the next slide. So, this is a slide that we've been keeping track of since late July. It's the total number of COVID vaccination doses that are given in Deschutes County per week. And then, out of those total doses that are given, the darker blue, at the top there, reflects the number of doses that were given at Deschutes County Health Services clinics, or within long-term care facilities. We also give doses at the jail, at homebound adult foster homes, and I mentioned long-term care facilities. You'll see that the percentage of doses in the county that we're giving as the Health Department is increasing pretty consistently over the last many months. The last few weeks, we're in the neighborhood of 20% to 25% of the total doses given are given by the Health Department. This slide is just a reminder for folks, the majority of the doses that we're currently giving are boost doses. So, as everyone, I think, is aware, Pfizer folks have authorized boost doses. So, six months after someone's second dose of Pfizer in their first two doses, so dose 1, dose 2, and then a citizen is considered fully vaccinated, six months after that second dose, they may be eligible for a boost shot. So, just a point of knowledge for everyone, even if someone gets a boost dose, regardless of, I guess, whether they get a boost dose or not, they're still considered fully vaccinated and have great protection from hospitalization and death from COVID. So, 65 years and older, or folks living in congregate care facilities, should receive a booster dose if they've gotten Pfizer. Those citizens that are 18 to 49 or 64 may qualify, depending on their work. So, folks who are first responders, healthcare providers, might qualify for that boost dose. And then, also, folks who might have underlying conditions that put them at higher risk for COVID. Let me go to the next slide. This is just a reminder for those citizens who might be pregnant, or thinking about becoming pregnant, to go ahead and get their COVID-19 vaccine. Pregnancy and COVID, you know, those mixed together can be particularly difficult. So, we would recommend anyone who's pregnant or thinking about it to get that vaccine. Last week, we started administering flu vaccines in the community, and this is just a reminder for folks to get their flu vaccine. Anything that we can do to help our healthcare professionals in our hospital system keep folks out of those areas is something great that we can do. And then, just a reminder about where you can get your Pfizer boost dose. Some of the easiest and fastest ways are through pharmacies, so at vaccines.gov, or through folks' primary care physicians. At all of our Deschutes pop-up clinics, we are providing boost dose. The wait is sometimes long, and so we're encouraging folks to go those first two routes if possible. Many of the primary care providers are not administering Pfizer, so we are seeing those folks come to our Deschutes County clinics and to pharmacies for those doses. And our October vaccine events that are open to the public, so we've got an event in Sisters, Mondays, at the Sisters Firehouse. We have been there all summer, will continue to be there through the fall. Bend, we've got a Tuesday evening clinic that is currently very close to where you guys are right now, at the 1340 Northwest Wall Building. We'll be moving that clinic to the Larkspur Community Center on October 26th, just to provide a little bit more parking and bandwidth and area for us to administer vaccines. And then, Wednesday at the Downtown Library in Bend. Redmond, Thursdays, at the Redmond City Hall. And then, Lapine on Tuesdays, at the Lapine Library. I'd like to give a special thank you to the Deschutes County Library System, Sisters Firehouse, and Bend Metro Parks and Rec for being really wonderful community partners and helping us out with space. And then, this is a reminder for folks to head to centraloregencovidvaccine.com. Our partners who are administering vaccines are updating their availability and their availability for people to make appointments for their vaccines on this webpage. And lastly, if anyone has any questions, or they need any assistance with getting in for a vaccine, or just general COVID-related questions, they're free to call our hotline Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00.
Great. Thank you so much. Some good facts out there, good discussion also.
I'd just like to return to that theme from the very beginning of the presentation. The phrase I wish I'd used then, which I'll use now, is misinformation is killing people. And so, thank you all for all the work that you do through presentations like these, through public communications, through the hotline, through contact investigation, to get good information out into our community, and increasingly, I'm feeling like that the most important thing that the county can do is try to counteract misinformation that is keeping people from taking... do is try to counteract misinformation that is keeping people from taking preventive measures to protect themselves and others from COVID, preventing people from getting vaccinated. And I, I guess I'd ask my fellow commissioners to think about what we can do, what more we can do to combat misinformation in the community.
I do have a question, Dr. Johnson. I was taking notes and I noticed that it wasn't on the paper, the presentation, when you had the graph that actually is coming down. And you said natural immunity from those infected, because we've had almost 19,000 now infected in the county. So you're actually considering the antibodies from those people in your analysis at this moment in time? I, I mean, I wrote this down and then I'm thinking like, it's not printed here, so I just want to confirm that.
So there are some parameters in the model now that make some assumptions that after some point in time, you were going to, the immunity that you have acquired from either a vaccination or being infected is going to start to wane. And then that at some point in time, it's going, you'll be all the way back down to zero. Now, that's a big timeframe, and those are a little bit unknown with regard to the exact values of those parameters. But we also have to assume what percentage are going to get boosters or are not going to get boosters, and those would be the people that would wane. And so, yes, we have worked that functionality back into the, into the model. It kind of surprises me, and it has others around the state who have implemented this, this function into their model as well, that it doesn't have as much of an effect as I was kind of expecting. You have to really, you have to really crank those parameters in order to have that give us an opportunity for, you know, this big surge. But yes, we are doing that, and it, it does move it, but just not as much as, as I was thinking. But if you think about it, if you don't start waning for six to nine months, and it takes 12 to 24 months for it to go down to zero, that's, that's just a very small trickle. So the vaccine is, is your best bet to maintain that. Getting a booster keeps you completely out of that. And now, you know, that's kind of the preferred thing, but, yeah. So we're continuing to do research on what are the proper values for those parameters. We think we have them in the ballpark, but...
It's interesting because...
But that's, yeah, it's, it's pretty exciting for those of us that are creating the model to be able to do that. And we can what-if a lot of scenarios and see the impact is kind of the main reason to have that in the model.
Well, what's so fascinating is that we are actually the fifth-most vaccinated county in the state, and yet our COVID numbers have been at the top. I think we were like number one one day. And, you know, I've, I've heard from one resident who's, you know, very concerned with that, if you do it proportionally with Multnomah County's population, and here we are. You know, do you have any answers why our numbers are so high? I mean, because we are seven, you know, we're up at the top of the vaccinated percentage-wise.
Yeah, well, I, you know, there's, it's behavior. If you don't give it an opportunity to transmit, it won't transfer. If you don't wear a mask, if you don't keep good distance, if you don't wash your hands, that's, this is an incredibly transmissible virus. So given the opportunity, and we still have like 60,000 people out there in Central Oregon who have not gotten a vaccination that are still in that susceptible pool, so it's, there are still hosts out there. I don't know, I'm, I'm sure others on this call and this panel have, have a much more clinical approach to describing that, but from the modeling perspective, I see it react very, very subtle, you know, not subtly, to policy changes and behavior changes that can be documented.
Also, just to add from a non-clinical perspective, that unvaccinated or vaccinated, frankly, end up sort of in clusters and they aggregate. So when we have a virus imported into that cluster, it's like wildfire and affects the numbers. And given that we are a touristy region, an outdoor, what is it, outdoor adventure region in Oregon and Northwest, certainly it welcomes importation of this virus and it can spread like wildfire. So commissioners, just if, if, if it's okay, I just not only want to thank you, and frankly, from day one last year, all of you and previous commissioners were very fact-based in your approaches despite any political noise out there. And certainly I want to acknowledge all of you who remain to be fact-based. Of course, you ask questions, rightfully so, so do your constituents, and we understand that. I want to be humble about the work that we're doing, because I don't believe, as public health director, I don't believe public health has all the answers. We certainly try to be as fact-based as possible, as scientifically driven as possible, but even science doesn't have all the answers. If we're making a decision today, we don't necessarily have good science around all the benefits or harmful unintended consequences. So that's why we have a democratic process in place where we bring people of different backgrounds and expertise and hopefully focus on a common outcome and try to come up with the best policies. But, but frankly, what I do want to highlight is that starting point in that process needs to be based on facts and science. And then from there, of course, other factors come in. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. We are going to continue to share the facts, and people have a choice to make, to listen to the type of information they want to listen to and make the choices. In communicable disease, though, our choices matter. They, our choices impact others, and that's important to keep in mind.
Thank you very much for the COVID update today. I will see you in two weeks, and, you know, thanks for the preparation to go into this topic also.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go back to item number nine, and then just letting the folks in the room know, we'll take a little break before our American Rescue Plan funding update. We've been here for a few hours, but we'll take a little break after this item. So item number nine, administration staffing request.
Thank you, commissioners, for the record. Whitney Hale, Administrative Services. We are here today to request board approval to add an FTE to the Administrative Services Department. This is a request that came before the board and the Budget Committee earlier this year, and it's a request to add a Public Information Officer to our team. During the budget process, the board will likely remember that the Budget Committee approved the funding for this position, but not formally the position, the FTE. So today, we're returning to you to request and discuss our request for, to add that position. During the Budget Committee's deliberations, they acknowledged that we were going to have a transition in the county administrator role and that with Nick coming on board, that he should review our staffing needs and our priority areas. And so I think Nick has had a chance to do that, and I'll, I'll turn things over to him to kind of talk about that assessment.
Thanks, Whitney. I'll just keep my comments relatively brief. It was really clear to me throughout the month of September and the first week of October that capacity was certainly necessary to, for Administrative Services in order to implement the board's ambitious goals and priorities for the year ahead and what, and what we're undertaking. And recognizing that Administrative Services haven't, has not increased capacity in 13 years, and given the, the county's grown, the number of issues we're tackling, really a robust agenda going forward, I completely concurred with Tom Anderson's plan to add capacity by beginning with reclassifying Whitney Hale, Communications Director, to Deputy County Administrator, which we did last week. That was step one. And then step two was and is to create the position of Public Information Officer, the PIO position. And I wanted to make that decision quickly, just so that we could initiate, if the board supports, so we could initiate that recruitment just as soon as possible prior to the holiday season beginning, and then the challenges with bringing somebody on board and delaying that additional capacity into 2022. So we're here before you to seek your approval for that, and if you have any questions about what the PIO position would be and what the position would do, Whitney's certainly able to, to communicate that to you.
I just had a question. Whitney, what was the dollar amount for that position? It's not, I didn't see it mentioned here. I know we've already approved it, but I was just curious.
It's 113,518, and the Budget Committee approved that half of that would be funded through ISFs in the admin budget, and the other half would be funded directly by general fund.
Okay. So in case anyone's watching and they know we have this position out, that's what it's going to pay, is that the gross or is that to include benefits?
That's include, that's the total roll-up cost, so that is reflective of starting salary.
Okay. Because I just thought, you know, it's, you know how tight the market is, how we've lost more people working in the labor force? What is it? The numbers that just came out are quite unbelievable. So in case someone in the community hears it.
Definitely. This is a really important position that gets to touch so many departments and does, has such an important role. So I definitely, if there are folks watching who are interested in this, it is a phenomenal opportunity and experience.
And, and we'll do, we will do an external recruitment for that.
That is our plan. If the board approves the request today, we plan to launch that as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for the clarity about the funding of the position. So one half by internal service funds, so the departments and the other operations of the county, it'll just be a little addition, but it, it's to serve the whole county also. So this is Public Information Officer. Any of the topics that come through the county services will be shared in that professional manner, which you, you've done for a couple of years now, and you've done a wonderful job. So we'll get you some support.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So I'm very supportive.
Definitely. Yes, and thank you, Whitney, for your excellent job the last couple of years. It's, it's really been a pleasure to work with you.
Midwest Commissioner.
I think you'll have big shoes to fill. Maybe your shoes are little, but, you know. I think it's, you know, hopefully we'll find someone out there that really is attracted to this opportunity.
Thank you.
I, I move approval to add a Public Information Officer to the county's Administrative Services Department.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? See none? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Derry?
Yes.
Your votes, yes? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So let's see, at this time, I'm proposing a five to seven minute break. We've been here for a couple of hours, and then we'll get back into the last topic of the morning, with American Rescue Plan Funding Update.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, well, a five-minute break turned into quite a social event, but it's got everybody warmed up here, I guess, in the back of the, so the camera's on the three of us, but there's about, yeah, eight or 10 people here in the room. At this time, item number 11, American Rescue Plan Funding Update. Greg Munn is here. Thank you very much.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. Greg Munn, Chief Financial Officer for the county. This agenda item that's before you here is an update on the American Rescue Plan Funding. And today's, I'll just give you an overview of what we'll do today, and then I'm going to turn it over to kind of our main presentation. But just in terms of background, or in terms of today, the main item that we're going to discuss or bring before the board is a proposal for childcare solution, early child, high-quality childcare solution in the county. And also I'll give you a brief update on the housing proposal, affordable housing proposal development update. And then, as we do with every meeting, at the back of your packet is a list of those projects that have been submitted, all of them, whether they're eligible to be determined or not eligible, and then also the list of eligible projects and where they are in either review or funding status. So we'll have a chance to go over that. In terms of the first... In terms of the first agenda, component of the agenda item, I just want to give you some update on the childcare update. Back on July 14th, the Board approved a $1 million match funds for the Little Kits Early Learning and Childcare Center. And at the same time, asked staff to provide a comprehensive understanding of the gaps in high-quality childcare in the county. And the intent there was to, you know, come back with a, answer the question is, where are the gaps in the county? And is there a possible optimal solution in terms of investing some of these ARPA funds for the best possible outcomes? That was on July 14th. On August 16th, Brenda Comini from the ESD and Early Learning Division, and Karen Prowl from Neighbor Impact presented an overview of our capacity in the county and demand, and it was about a two-to-one ratio. The numbers that she shared there. And since that meeting, a coalition of childcare experts have come together to study the problem at a deeper level and to try to encompass the county and understand the problem, and again, to bring the proposal back to the Board for possible funding consideration. And so that's where we are today. So this coalition includes a wide representation of the experts in the county. And I am not going to name everybody's name, but I'm going, I want to introduce to you Kelly Sparks from OSU, who has been graciously stepped in in kind of the leadership role of this committee. And I think everybody in the room here would probably agree, with input from everybody, has developed this proposal that she will, she and the rest of the committee folks will probably participate in demonstrating. So in your packet, there was a bunch of information that was included about this. But in addition to that, the presentation that will be shared up on the Board today is in front of you. It's a paper copy. So she will be walking through that. And at that, at this point, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Great, thank you. Please join us. So we do have two microphones here. We can alternate or go however we want to do it. We do have eight people in the room, probably a few more online. So one, just for the other Commissioners to understand, I mean, wherever we go today, I'm, you know, I'm ready to do investments too. But, you know, let's take it slowly and communicate amongst ourselves, because as I say, we don't do this outside of this Board meeting. So let's make sure we have a good feel for the things that may be proposed to invest in. But let's hear about the big picture.
Yeah, terrific. So first of all, I'd like to introduce, I think we have a couple of folks online as well, and I'd like to just really clear that this has been a really broad coalition of community leaders, as well as providers in the early childhood and childcare space that have come together to talk about how we can work as a coalition to help solve our childcare crisis here in Deschutes County. So I think we have online Karen.
We might, yeah, we might want to invite some other folks in. If you, I don't know if you can kind of display a list or mention some names or?
Karen Prowl from Neighbor Impact Childcare Resources, Brenda Comini from the High Desert ESD Early Learning Hub, Heather Ficht, the Executive Director of East Cascade Works. Okay. And so, yeah, they've.
There we go.
Perfect. And then.
They've been invited in. Thank you very much for joining us.
Perfect. And so then in the room, we have with us Amy Howell from Central Oregon Community College's Early Childhood Education. We have Rebecca Berry, the Vice President of Human Resources for the St. Charles System. We have Bess Goggins from the Boys and Girls Club of Bend. We have Reverend Erica Spate and Becca Ellis from Ree Village. We have Cara Tachikawa, the Executive Director of Morning Star Relief Nursery. And we have Ken Bedchart from the, is the Executive Director of the Small Business Development Center up at COCC. So I think we have representation for most members of our coalition. And then I just want to call out Becca Tatum, who has been working with us in this space, helping and consulting. Bruce Abernathy has been working with us. Katie Brooks and Dr. Lori Chesley up at COCC as well. So it really has been a broad coalition of members together. And I have the pleasure of launching us off. So I think Brenda is going to start off by giving us some background information online. Brenda, are you, are you there?
I am.
There we go.
Perfect.
Thank you for welcoming us back. I'm just going to kick this off a little bit, and thank you to Greg for laying the context. So that has caught us up, and you have gotten introductions to the broad range of partnerships that are coming together with this today. So this is a follow-up to our previous conversations about the vast need that we are seeing for families to get back to work, for workforce to be fully engaged. Childcare is a major issue. And prior to the pandemic, we were already across the region and within Deschutes County, a childcare desert, meaning that we had less than one seat available, or slot available, for every three children. Our gaps analysis that was shared with you previously, we are proposing to, over the next three to five years, meet a need to get us out of that childcare desert criteria, which means building a total of estimated nearly 3,500 seats, which also means building the workforce within the childcare sector to meet that need. So we are proposing for you today a comprehensive strategy about how the solution can address creating a pipeline of new teachers, building capacity for early care, early learning and childcare centers, and then establishing the ongoing support for sustainability to see this system thrive moving forward. Any questions about the problem or the gap before we transition to the detail around solutions?
No, thank you.
Then I will transition to Karen.
All right. So to kick us off with our solution, we've, we've had limited public exposure to be able to recruit to the field of early care and education. In the past, we haven't been a strong field to recruit to due to the low wages and lack of ability to really bring people in and pay them well in the field. As that changes, and there's more investment from state and federal government into early care and education, and as we build this solution pipeline for prospective early educators in our region, one of the proposals is to have a pathways director so that we can capture interest of new educators in our field and be able to place them appropriately in the different pipelines that are available, in the different pathways that are available. And to really take the time to sit down and understand where these new early educators are coming from, what do they come to the field with, so that we can place them in the best track to be able to get them into that teacher-qualified access of new, new workers in our field. So that is a piece of this portion of it, and then also to really do a public campaign around the field of early care and education. Anything that is funded, to be able to let our community know that these opportunities are there, to be able to bring attention to the impact that community members can have in this field, and to even bring people back to the field who have chosen to walk away and are not aware of the changes that have happened in the field. Okay, so the next piece of this is a fast-track option for getting new early educators teacher-qualified. One piece of regulation is that a person has to be teacher-qualified in order to be left alone with children in the classroom. And we recently did, last Friday, we did a quick survey of early educators in Deschutes County. We had 32 responses from early educators. Of those, they voiced a need for a total of 55 new staff members who are teacher-qualified. The result of getting those teacher-qualified folks into the programs would open up 21 classrooms that are currently not being used due to lack of workforce. So that just, you know, shows the need for getting people fast-tracked into teacher qualification. So in partnership with our local licensing, Neighbor Impact Childcare Resources has come up with an option available to be able to get someone teacher-qualified within 12 weeks, which is a very short timeline. This is not meant to be the end of the journey by any means. This is the beginning of the journey for new teachers. To be able to get teachers in, to be able to pay that first 12 weeks, which takes a financial burden off the center, do wraparound supports with directors to ensure that reflective supervision is being used, and really have a one-on-one with teachers each week, do coaching, help them understand development of children, offer them 60 hours of training, do a pre-service to get them into the classroom, and then walk along them, walk alongside with that journey of six months of really intensive service to those new educators. And get them into the field, and then to be able to retain them. And part of that professional development planning with each of these individuals would be, you know, what are your next steps? What is the next track that you're going on to? Because this is an exception to a rule, to get them teacher-qualified. But then we would want to continue on that journey with them as well.
So the next part of the proposal is for adding a Little Kits internship program. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the funding already issued to OSU Cascades and COCC in coordination with Childcare Resources to build a future childcare center. We have opened up a Little Beavs, a short-term facility for 28 children, and we currently have 75 additional kids on the waitlist for a program here in Bend. What we'd like to add to this program is a formal internship program that allows those teacher recruits to be able to proceed in their journey to becoming teacher-qualified. So it would be funding to recruit, advise, and educate six to 24 teacher candidates per year in either COCC's Early Learning Program, or OSU Cascade's Human Development Family Services, or Early Education Program, or Educate, sorry, Elementary Education Program, providing them some tuition assistance, as well as 20 hours of paid work in a licensed childcare center to meet their qualifications, future qualifications, to become a teacher-trained. Over the course of three years, we believe that we can bring 54 new teachers who are currently not in the market today into the market to work in childcare centers across our region to help us meet the need for future teachers. The next part of the solution is to talk about meeting the demand in terms of the facilities that we need to grow. Karen, just a moment ago, mentioned that we have 21 classrooms that we could open up with future teachers. That allows us to meet the capacity that we had coming into the pandemic as we think, as we want to grow our capacity, knowing we were already a childcare pandemic. We have a series of proposals on how we can grow the facility's footprint in Bend and across Deschutes County and other cities. The first is just to remind us that we have a Little Kits Center here coming forth in Bend. We're already moving very quickly towards building that center and trying to get it open as early as next fall. It will really depend on the raw materials and construction timeline and how quickly we can do that. There is a willingness and a desire for an additional Little Kits operated by COCC and OSU Cascades, which is not formally in your proposal deck today, but from COCC to offer land for a second center that would be co-located on one of their campuses, and would be happy to work with COCC to provide an additional request for funding if there was openness to that proposal as well. That would be expand the capacity by an additional 100 children serving Deschutes County. The next is, I'd like to invite Bess and Ray, I'm going to say the wrong name again, Rebecca from St. Charles to talk to an additional solution here in Central Oregon.
Thank you for having us today. As you know, with, you heard the COVID update earlier. I had a chance to listen in at the end of that. So as you know, the hospital has been very challenged with the amount of inpatients and volumes that we're seeing. The challenge extends to the workforce. And with the workforce, we have had a challenge in getting people to stay in the workforce. Sometimes that's due to childcare, or a delay in entering back into the workforce after a birth of a child because I can't find care for their infant. And so with that, another challenge that comes, as we recruit to fill some of the vacancies that we have, as new people move into our area, they're not able to identify childcare right away. So that could lead to a delayed start date, or in some cases, not coming at all. And so as we have looked and talked and surveyed our staff, we know that we have a need that can go anywhere between 175-ish up to 200, as many are planning for future families. And we want to be able to support and sustain our workforce when they're at work. We want them to be able to focus on taking care of their patients and doing their work, and not worried about where their children are, and to know that they have a safe place for them, and one that's consistent and flexible to meet the needs of their schedules too. And so with this, I'm very excited for this opportunity to work with the Little Kits Program and with the Boys and Girls Club. St. Charles portion of this is to be able to have land that we would contribute, and getting that land ready for two, up to two modular units. With the two modular units, we could serve, I think it's about 100 kids per unit, so up to 200, which would make a really big difference for healthcare workers, especially for those reporting on the east side. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Bess.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Bess Goggins. I am the new CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Bend, and thrilled to be here. Also thrilled to be working with Rebecca in St. Charles, with Kelly, with OSU Cascades, and with Amy Howell at COCC on this project. You know, I started this role just over three months ago, and I've learned a lot. It's been like drinking from 12 fire hoses at once. But what has become markedly clear to me is the need for both early childhood programming, as well as for after-school programming. That was something that was clear to me throughout my interview process, but it really resonated with me when we opened up our after-school registration this fall. I believe it was written into the proposal, but we filled up from our wait, we filled up our, both of our sites in downtown and in east Bend in less than 24 hours, and we had so much traffic from families that our website continually broke. And I was calling on my staff to repair the links so that we could continue to bring people onto our waitlist. I think that's when it really registered for me, that the need in Central Oregon and in Bend is very real. And what else I have learned through my own process of being prepared to take on this role, and then since then, talking to community members and families, is that east Bend is growing so rapidly for our city. And when this opportunity came about to collaborate with St. Charles and with Little Kits, it just seemed to make sense to me because the, there's a continuum that could be at play, where we could be serving families who have children from infancy to pre-K, being the Little Kits component. And then literally, in the, in the future, when we have two modular centers, walk across the parking lot to a second modular center where they would be an after-school programming from kindergarten through their teenage years. So the consistency of care there really spoke to me, in addition to the need. Right now, we still maintain a waitlist for the Boys and Girls Club of after-school needs with it, with families. And we are fielding calls from families. I'm thinking back to when the, when we first had our waitlist. I was having conversations with frontline workers, with essential healthcare workers, who were saying, "I am a nurse, I am a doctor, I have different shifts, and I need some place for my elementary student to go." And so trying to navigate that with the limitations of space we currently have has been incredibly challenging. And I feel the need deeply with every single parent that I speak with. So I'm honored to be here today. I'm very hopeful and have my fingers crossed that we can continue to provide increased services to the families of Bend, and glad, glad to be here.
Great, thank you.
And there's another detail I failed to add, so if you don't mind, I can include that. As I shared that St. Charles will be providing the land, we'll also be providing the, preparing the land to get it ready for the modular units.
we'll also be providing the, preparing the land to get it ready for the modular units, bringing utilities up to speed. And we recognize it's part of our success in making sure that this program is successful and making sure that we continue to support it in any way we can to continue with that longevity of having the services on our campus.
So for clarity, you know, the proposal just says 2.1 million up to 200 trillion children. Can you put that in perspective? Is that a $2.1 million request kind of specific to the ARPA funds? Yeah, and so I'm trying to kind of understand the numbers a little bit. And maybe it's too soon. I mean, we'll get to that, I'm sure, but.
If we can hold for the last slide, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'd be happy to walk through what each of those proposals are in the actual funding class.
Yep.
One consolidated slide, so maybe it's easier to look.
I kind of figured it's coming. Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next summary proposal is from Ree Village. I'd like to invite our colleagues up to present.
Welcome.
Good morning, thank you. My name's Reverend Erica Spate. I'm one of the co-founders of Ree Village.
Yeah, and I'm Becca Ellis, the other co-founder of Ree Village.
We're grateful to be a part of this coalition. We opened our first childcare center in the nursery of First Presbyterian Church in May after a year and a half of pandemic planning. The origin story of us as providers, we are ministers and church people. But we kept hearing over and over again from our parishioners and our families that this was the biggest pressure on their lives. We all know that. So we worked to open a certified, full-time childcare center. We're currently offering care to 10 children. It will be 15 starting this fall. We're a mission-driven nonprofit organization and really grateful to be nurturing partnerships across sectors. So of course, our two faith communities came together for this first center. We're in the process of opening up our second center with the Methodist Church in downtown Bend. And then a blossoming partnership in Sisters with the Sisters Parks and Recreation Department. Part of our sweet spot as providers, we know that there needs to be a buffet for families to choose what works best for them. But part of our sweet spot is to work in those partnerships to reduce overhead costs. So working in church buildings, in parks and recreation buildings to eliminate the need to pay rent. And then to be able to bring parents into the classrooms as aides. So we are a co-op. And all of that means that we are seeking to serve working families in Bend. We have a number of teachers, firefighters, and people in the service and hospitality industry in our center with our average cost being about $350 per child per month. If you have childcare, you know that that is affordable. We started with the needs of the family and then built our, our business model from there. Becca, what do you want to add? We could talk all day.
I know, yeah.
And Becca has to run to the center any minute because that's the life of being a provider.
Yeah. No, I think that, I think Erica painted the picture of what we do. And it's just exciting to be a part of this conversation as, as we have kind of worked through, we've learned a lot this past year and developing this very different model of childcare and seeing how it is a sustainable way to kind of move into this. Really just meeting families where they are and building up the community aspect of our program has been incredibly rewarding. And we're already seeing huge impacts in these families' lives who otherwise did not have access to childcare.
Are you guys doing anything in Redmond? I know you mentioned Sisters. You, you don't have any plans for Redmond yet?
Not yet, but you'll see in the, maybe you have this in front of you, our proposal in front of you, that we anticipate opening four more sites. So I named two, one in downtown Bend, one in Sisters. But we have a commitment as a part of our mission to continue to open up centers to replicate this model and adapt it to different places. So would love to hear about churches or other community buildings that might be suitable for a center, yeah.
Right.
Can I ask a little bit about, about how you're staffing your, your childcare centers? It sounds like it's a, it's a unique model. I mean, you frequently think about, you know, you know, a business structure where there's, you know, a director and then there's, you know, a variety of staff. How does it, how does it work within the, the faith-based structure that you've created?
Yeah, we spent a lot of learning there. And, and to be clear, Ree Village is its own, its own 501(c)(3), so it's not housed under either of our faith communities. It's just a partnership there. How we actually have it work is that I am for this first kind of pilot center, the director. And that's just kind of absorbed into my role already at the church. And then our classroom, you know, we only have one classroom with 10, 15 children. So we have a head teacher. And then we, in total, have three certified teacher staff. And then our parents are trained as aides and are considered staff. So they have all, they are required to go through all of the same trainings that we would if we were hiring an aide and are committed to certain hours every month.
And then so the use of the word co-op in your, in your name, I mean, that, that reflects that the, the parents are actually active, actively contributing a certain amount of hours to the.
Right now, it's eight hours per month, so two mornings a month. And we've had parents say that they appreciate going into the classroom and their child can see, oh, mom's here to care for all of us today, to, to change other kids' diapers, to play with other children. So we really feel like not only does this help us keep our costs low in terms of tuition, but also it's part of our ethos of building community. So there's really nothing more vulnerable than having someone else take care of your children and, and caring for other children. And we know then too, parents are learning developmentally appropriate play-based approaches to early childhood development, which then, when their next baby comes along or as they're accompanying their other children, the whole family is really benefiting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. Yeah, there's just about cheers here.
All right, next we have Mountain Star Relief Nursery. Karen, touch.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. I'm really excited about the Ree Village model. I love parents learning about play-based interactions with their kiddos. So I'm excited for that. So I believe all of the Commissioners know about Mountain Star. We are one of your community grant recipients each year for our site in Bend. This year, we received $20,000 from the county Commissioners. Thank you so much for that. The piece that Mountain Star focuses on is the vulnerable families in our community because as anyone who's a parent knows, parenting is very difficult, even in the best of situations. And the families that we work with are not necessarily in the best of situations. They have a variety of stressors happening in their lives. And so Mountain Star partners with them to help them hopefully learn some of the things that they would learn at Ree Village as well. But to create a better basis for these children's lives so that as they grow, our community becomes more healthy, more successful over the long term. So you'll see in our proposal that we are working to expand into Lapine. Mountain Star has been in Lapine with an outreach worker for the past five years. And we've been searching and trying to find that partnership of where do we sit, where can we find a classroom? How can we expand and grow in this community? And so we were super excited to be a part of this coalition, to ask for funding to be able to expand into an actual facility that Mountain Star would own and run for the foreseeable future, especially as we're thinking about Lapine growing in the future, the population boom that is likely coming to that region as Bend becomes less and less affordable. Likely, people are starting to head into Lapine. And so we see the need for a classroom growing potentially exponentially over the next few years there. And Mountain Star currently offers our relief nursery services for vulnerable, vulnerable children and families who are ages zero to three. And then we recently became a Preschool Promise recipient, which is a state-funded program that offers high-quality childcare and education for children who are three and four on September 1st each year. And so trying, the other guideline for that program is that families have to be under 200% of the federal poverty level. So it's similar to Head Start in that there's an income guideline, but there is that expanded, extra 100%. Head Start falls at the under 100% of the federal poverty level. Because of increasing wages in Oregon, people are not falling under that 100% guideline as often. And so Preschool Promise is attempting to fix that situation. So partly because of Mountain Star's structure, where our relief nursery programs are partially funded by state contracts and then Preschool Promise is funded, guaranteed funding through state contracts. And we have the long-term viability to continue to offer our services completely for free to families. So I am excited for the potential for Mountain Star in Lapine.
So a question, the Redmond property's been purchased, is that true?
Yes.
Because that was a couple of years ago, was that?
Yes, we got our keys two days before the statewide Stay Home Save Lives order came out last year in the spring. And so we opened our Redmond facility for classroom services last year in August. And we are fully staffed. We have slots for up to 18 kiddos in the zero-to-three relief nursery age range. And then we have secured partial funding to begin our remodel of the garage at that site. And we also have the okay from the City of Redmond to add a learning space in the garage. And so we're seeking that extra last little bit to finish out the garage so that we can have a classroom up and running by next fall.
Great, yeah, so I'm just looking, you know, you're talking Redmond and Lapine here. So Redmond facility is, is in hand.
Yes.
And then Lapine is more of the future, you know, finding the land and the building.
Hope, yes.
Yep, got it, okay. Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Karen Prowe online to talk to a, how we then expand this to other centers and programs that we may not have spoken with yet.
So with this part of the solution, it's really looking at all of our current childcare programs that are out there, those who are looking to expand, those who need to add an additional classroom or get into a larger facility, and the, the money to be able to do that. And sometimes it's as simple as getting that first couple of months of rent together. Sometimes it's things like our, our new sprinkler system code that has just come out where programs are concerned that they're not going to be able to cover that cost or other basic costs, setup costs to get going. We have a lot of untapped capacity within our current programs. And so a fund of $500,000 to be able to meet those needs of providers as they ask for expansion funding. We have this week, it's Wednesday, and we have already had six requests in our office for, what if I want to expand? Who do I go to? Where is there funding for that? Right now, there is funding available through the Early Learning Division for significant grants to existing programs. But for programs who want to expand or who want to pick up an additional facility or upgrade to a larger facility, those funds are not available. So this could have a huge impact in our area to really grow capacity of children served.
Thank you.
And then finally, how do we grow new programs? How do we create the business solutions and make them sustainable going forward? Ken's going to walk us through that.
Could I just ask Karen a question before?
Yes.
We move on. So we, we did receive a, a couple of requests from small business childcare current operations. And so by creating this sort of umbrella program, that would, that would be the program that businesses like that could approach to get facilities investment that they needed to, to do the expansions that they want to do.
Yes, Commissioner, that would be the idea of this, to be able to make that available to all of Deschutes County. And when programs have that need, then they would able, be able to access those dollars. And the group that came together to prepare these proposals in partnership with you would be able to say, you know, what are the parameters for that? And where do we want to focus those dollars to ensure access to everyone to really have the most powerful use of those dollars? And then, you know, with that guidance, to be able to offer that to the community.
Given your sense of the need out there for this, I mean, we, we, we know that, we know that it, it's been a hard year for, you know, small childcare businesses. Is, how, how far do you think $500,000 gets us? Do you, do you think it addresses a substantial amount of the, the need or the demand for support out there? Or do you think it's like a, a first installment?
I would say that it's a first installment. And I know that we have many programs who, over the years, have chosen not to expand due to lack of funding. I mean, it's just unprecedented that we even have funding available to our provider community right now. And once word gets out, I would imagine that we're going to have a lot of programs who have been in existence for many years who are going to come forward and say, well, now that this pot of money is available, I would love to pursue that, that dream of expanding my childcare facility.
Thank you.
Karen, you might also address the Early Learning Division funding that is available right now to existing providers and how access is achieved for those funds.
Okay, so right now, any program that is currently licensed or chooses to get licensed before the end of December, they have access to $248 million in the state of Oregon to apply for sustainability funds. And so that grant is non-competitive. If a program exists, they can go after those dollars. It's a significant amount of money for especially our larger programs who serve over 50 children. There are bonus options where a program can say that they serve odd-hour care. They get an additional 10% on top of, of the money they've already asked for. If they're serving infants, they get another 10% on top of that. If they accept employment-related daycare, they get an additional 10% on top of that. And so there, right now, there's money available for existing programs based on their existing licensed capacity.
And you, you said that that was non-competitive?
Correct.
So is there a match, a match requirement? I mean, could we see the money we put into this small center facilities fund be used as leverage to, with these early learning division dollars?
I think just by the very nature of how these dollars would enter the community, you will be matching those dollars. And I, I believe that in order to do some sort of a one-to-one match or one-to-two match or something like that, it would probably be significantly more than, than that $500,000. I expect we're going to see a very large amount of money come into our region for existing programs and existing slots through these ELD grants.
But, but the, the ELD grants, they don't have a match requirement?
No, they do not.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Chang, I also might add that we've been very intentional because of that funding source, that the programs that you're seeing here today are new programs that are not eligible to access those funds. So these are programs that are additive and adding additional capacity that are currently not licensed programs. So we've not added any dollars into existing programs here.
And are we, the, the kind of, the network of childcare providers, are you actively promoting these ELD opportunities to existing, existing childcare businesses and, and facilities?
There are, yes, so the Governor's Regional Solutions Team is actively promoting them. The Neighbor Impact Cascade Child Care Resources is actively promoting them. They're being actively promoted across the community, yes.
Thank you.
But the six requests that you guys have already received, those aren't, those cannot apply for that funding, the 248 million?
Some of them can, yes. So there was, there, I think there was two additional requests that are. that are, that we've kind of layered underneath the Small Capacity Fund, and those would be the Manzanita request and the School of Enrichment request. They were requesting, there are various parts to their asks. Some of them were about kind of meeting their short-term financial issues as related to COVID, and some of them were a capacity increase in fund. What this proposal is recommending is to support the facilities fund. And so then maybe potentially going back to those providers with criteria that would be established in coordination with the Deschutes County Commission in how to allocate those funds and ask for a revised proposal based on the criteria that would be established and opening up that community-wide to existing providers so that it could be expanded capacity.
And I also hope if some of the individual businesses who came in with requests, essentially for relief, you know, for business losses suffered during COVID, I hope we are plugging them into, Greg is nodding his head, I hope we're plugging them into the Business Assistance Program that we're going to develop using ARPA funds as well. Great, thank you.
So, good morning Commissioners. So our part of the solution really focuses on launching new home-based childcare businesses. And so what we've really put together is a pilot program between COCC, Small Business Development Center, and Neighbor Impact that comes together and builds some foundational education and wraparound services to launch home-based childcare businesses. And how we go about doing this is we take a group of individuals who are interested in starting their own home-based childcare businesses and take them through 20 hours of classroom time where we're teaching them about how to manage a business, how to start a business, manage the finances of it, manage the facility, the hiring and management of labor, as well as all of the state's licensing requirements at the same time. SBDC being responsible for all the business aspects and Neighbor Impact responsible for all the licensing aspects. And really what our goal is, is to really create a foundation that you are a business as a home-based childcare organization. Because too often, they don't think themselves as a business. They think themselves as they're taking care of their neighbor's kids or they're taking care of their kids and their other family kids. But we really want to give them a foundation is you are a business, and how do you do this to break even or, of course, to make money and pay for themselves at the end of the day? And we do this, as I mentioned, through classroom, 20 hours in the classroom. But we also have one-on-one advising with them. So the way we've structured is we spend one week in the classroom going over topics, and then they actually have an advisor that meets with them to cover their specific needs. Topics include everything from startup logistics, state registration and licensing, banking, insurance. We spend two weeks on financial management, break-even analysis, profit and loss, capital access, all the fundamental things that you need as a have as a business owner. And of course, we're working on the licensing aspects as well. And what we're also doing to wrap around services is we find that with the home-based childcare businesses, they don't have the tools available to them. So for instance, the registration of their students and their web presence may not exist. So what we've done is we've actually purchased a software called Wonder School, and we're actually providing them a software-based tool that allows them to manage the registration, create a web presence, manage their finances. So at the end of the year, when they have to do their taxes, they actually have financial statements set up out of the system itself. And we'll give them one-year access to that tool. If they complete the program, if they become either certified or registered with the state of Oregon and they are business licensed through the Secretary of State, this program would give them $5,000 grant to start their home-based childcare business at the same time. We see this as a pilot, and we see three cohorts going through it, a fall, a winter, and a spring. Last night, we had our first night of the program. So we've kind of jumped ahead and started the process of recruiting into the program itself. And we had 13 folks registered, actually 12 show up for the program last night. We are working to make some contact with the rest of them on, or the person that didn't show up around, are you still interested, not? But really good start to the program. Our goal is to have 30 new businesses launched over the next year. And that would get us to about 250 slots if all those came to fruition. So exciting times for us. I would say that in terms of the dollar amount that we're requesting, we actually got some numbers transposed. What's listed here is our matching funds. Our actual request is $125,000. We have an additional 235 that we've got matched through other organizations throughout the region. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I know, that's what my letter said from August, that you were really asking for $125,000. And honestly, to me, this is so wonderful because if you can actually help those people, you know, when you have, if you have a couple of little children and you really just want to have a couple more at your house, but you can actually run it as a business, this is just an excellent opportunity. So I'm really hoping that we can fund that other $125,000 today. So thanks, Ken, for coming.
And hopefully, providing support like this will prevent people from getting into childcare and finding that they're financially struggling and having to get out of childcare as well.
Yeah, Karen and I are actually speaking about how do we continue the cohort after their time with us ends, right? How do we can extend that wraparound services and they pool together to really see that they are a business themselves and continue that connection?
Yeah, well, and if they have a business plan and they know their expenses, then they know what the kind of income they need. So you don't, it isn't a surprise, like six months in some period of time, you're not paying attention to your finances, all of a sudden, oh, I don't have money for something.
Exactly.
Great.
You would hope that with so many slots needed, that there wouldn't be this kind of like competitive tension among businesses that would keep them from talking to each other.
Well, I think they want to learn from each other, actually.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's so much, the market is so big that there should be plenty of room for everybody.
Yes, the demand is so great that competition is not our challenge right now.
No, total, yeah, we don't have competition in this. But actually helping them with their licensing and their insurance and their profit and loss, you know, these are, you guys have spent a lot of time on thinking this through, so I thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, our last slide is to summarize this, and I'll invite any of my colleagues to join me in making sure that I've accurately reflected the intent of the group. We, again, our proposal today is really three parts. It's about building the workforce so that we can open and staff the childcare centers we have today. It is about building infrastructure to expand the number of seats or slots that we have available in Deschutes County, driving towards that 3,500 total need that we know that we have in the region. And it's about making sure that we have sustainable, that we're putting good money after good programs and ensuring that they're sustainable on an ongoing basis. So the Business Accelerator, I apologize, I'm the one who inverted that, so I'll take responsibility there. The ask is for $125,000, and that's really about creating an ongoing sustainable workforce as well as in-home childcare providers and expanded seats. What Ken just spoke to, so it should be the opposite, $125,000 is requested of Deschutes County with $235,000 in match. The next program is the Childcare Sustainability Pathway Program. That is putting in place at Neighbor Impact the pathway director that Karen spoke to upfront, who is helping prospective early childhood educators find the path or open the door to the right path for them, whether it's through professional development, non-degree programs, a future apprentice program, a two-year degree or two-year credentials, or a four-year degree. So really a pathway to a director, getting more people into the early childhood workforce. A fast-track program, so a new program that is opening up that door, bringing people into the market and expanding our immediate need for early childhood educators. A four-year option for an internship program, providing a pathway through that first year, making sure they can get credentials and that they can then work in the market while pursuing whatever their higher education degree is. And then there's a series of center infrastructure asks. So Little Kids Bend West, that's the one that you have previously discussed, but I wanted to make sure that you had visibility and that it was a part of the overall program for the region. A Little Kids Boys and Girls Club of Bend and St. Charles Bend East program. Mountain Star for Lepine and supporting Redmond. Revillage, the Sisters extension, and then potentially moving towards Redmond. And then the Small Center Capacity Fund, and then calling out the other proposals that were submitted already and how they might be a part of that Small Center Capacity Fund. So the total ask, summary of all of the asks is, it's actually a little bit less than that. It's 2.7 million when I revert the numbers back to the columns that they should have been in. And it's leveraged by funding coming in from all sorts of other sources, including the city of Bend, the university, the college, land offered by St. Charles, and overhead and administrative time offered by almost all of these organizations across the region totaling 12.7 million. We're happy to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, as I say, I was starting to run the numbers in my head as we were going through it. So that was good to see the spreadsheet at the back there, so. Yeah, so one of the thoughts is, you know, what was the kind of the piece of the pie number that Greg can help with, that we were thinking about for childcare to start and, you know, put it in perspective? I know that there's ARPA funds, you know, first and second allocation. So then is there some timing associated with some of this also?
According to, we had a placeholder of 2 million, and we'd allocated 1 million for your program. That's what I'm looking at on our spreadsheet.
Yes, I can give you a quick update on that if you'd like. So the funding placeholder right now is $2 million, and that was one of the initial set-asides that the board made back in the beginning, back months ago. And then there was the $1 million award for the Bend Phase One component, which is also included in this submission here. So the submission here, when you re-add the numbers up with those, the two that were swapped around for the Business Accelerator, the net new ask would be $6,675,000.
So then the two, yeah, so just big picture, $2 million is from the first $19 million allocation also.
So that could be used to offset this.
Yeah, but I'm just acknowledging that, yeah, I mean, this, we're obviously, it's a big ask, and we're getting into the total ARPA allocation over the year now when we start talking this big of a number.
And I'm sorry, there isn't a number in here for CASA now. I realize it's a bit of a different program, but we don't have a number yet from those, from that organization, Greg. I had met with her quite a while ago. I know there were short, like 73 or something, you know, companions for children in their program.
That'd be a different kind of.
I know, we haven't.
Yeah, hold on to that, let's maybe.
Well, I mean, I just think we should, I mean, it wasn't a huge amount of money that she was asking for. I think it was under $100,000, but we don't have it yet, so I need to get back to her and see where that number is.
Yeah, well, and that's what I was referring to. Let's lay stuff out on the table today, and if we can make decisions.
Well, I would love to make the decision for the COCC program. I know they've started it. The fact that they've got, you know, at least 12 people showed up, that's really outstanding. And perhaps maybe a couple more will fill in after they've heard the story of this morning.
So you want to start kind of picking.
Well, I would like to do that one, I know that.
Yeah, so $125,000, so SBDC effort, Business Accelerator. I mean, I'm supportive of that, too, that's exciting.
I'm also supportive of that, but I think we should kind of start big picture and work our way down. You know, I'd just like to say that we have, the county will be receiving $38 million of ARPA funding. And in my mind, spending, you know, six, seven, eight million dollars of that on childcare investments is appropriate. We knew before the pandemic that childcare and housing affordability were two of the greatest threats to our economy here in Deschutes County, primarily because those two things have major impacts on workforce. During the pandemic, we've seen the workforce concerns exacerbated for our community. At the same time, that this is actually, this is a particular sector that has been hit very, very hard by the pandemic. The spacing and, you know, number constraints that came along with pandemic and, you know, COVID protective measures really, really took what were often, you know, economically kind of marginal activities, providing childcare, and broke the numbers for those people. So to get to a point where we have the childcare that we need to help our community economically recover is going to take a huge investment. I was really excited to hear about that ELD, you know, grant funding program and also to just see all the match in the, you know, in the center column here that's been put up against these excellent projects that we've heard about today. But I just want to start by saying, I think we, our community needs us to go big on this. And if that entailed using a quarter of our total ARPA funding, I actually think that it's entirely appropriate and it's strategic for us, both just for, you know, supporting our community, supporting parents, supporting businesses that need workers. And it's, yeah, and it's economically one of the smartest things we can do to invest in our economy locally.
So that's kind of an advocacy for the whole kit and caboodle, yeah?
I mean, you know, with those comments, you know, I would definitely like to ask about, you know, whether some of the larger items on this list, whether things would still happen if we made a smaller investment, whether some of these things are scalable. I really like the workforce investments. And, you know, my question, you know, kind of like my meta-level question about that is there's not as much match for those activities. And I guess my question is, is there other sources of support for developing this workforce that we desperately need? And if so, can we work those a little harder? But, you know, if there's not, then it's helpful to know that, and it's helpful to understand that, you know, if this is a strategic bottleneck, we need to, you know, this is an opportunity to step up and, you know, be innovative and, you know, in my opinion, create some competitive advantage for our community over all sorts of other parts of the state.
There we go.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Amy Howell, and I am the Program Director of Early Childhood Education up at Central Oregon Community College. And it's really wonderful to be here with you today. Early learning is really used to giving in-kind. Everything that we do is in-kind, and usually, we're not used to having a surplus of anything. So those of you that have children, you've worked with children, you know what it's like to dig in a bag for what you have, for the snacks that you have, to make it work, right? And that is the culture of our profession. So to have this opportunity to really share with you the impact that early learning provides to our communities is the greatest opportunity. And I know all of us here are just thankful for this opportunity to talk with you about that and that you're willing to listen. So as we're looking at those numbers and we're comparing the ask to other things that I know you're going to be facing, I would just like to remind everyone that this is the backbone of a strong and vibrant and healthy community. When we have thriving families, when moms and dads and grandparents know that their children are being taken care of, they can go to work, they can take college classes, they can be a productive member of the community because that primary source of emotional attention is taken care of. As a mother, I know a lot of you have children in your lives, too. It makes all the difference when your community is behind you to say, we've got this. Go and do the work you need to do. So I just really appreciate you taking a look at those big numbers. I know they're big, we're not used to working with big numbers. This whole thing is blowing our mind, and I think it says something that it's taken a global pandemic to raise the level of knowledge about early learning in the broader community. So I just want to thank you as you're looking at those numbers. But we have been squeezing and skimping and making do. and skimping and making do for generations, so thank you for thinking big with us as we look at this, appreciate it.
Great testimony, thank you so much, very motivating.
Is some of this scalable? I mean, so the Fast Track program, if you don't have $2 million to work with, then, you know, can you do, you know, if you had a million dollars, would you be able to do, you know, half of that? Or would it be, would, are there, you know, is the scale that this is being proposed at kind of like the optimum to, you know, get more, you know, get more people trained for the dollar? I don't know if that made sense, but.
Great question, I think Karen Proud is, has some thoughts, yeah?
I do, thank you, Amy. A large portion of that 1.6 million is payment for the first 12 weeks of wages for the early educator who's going through the program. So our initial thought was, this is a way to support new teachers in a classroom, build capacity in those classrooms where they really need more staffing, but not put that financial burden on the programs. So essentially sharing the wealth amongst our programs who are willing to step up and become a placement site for these new early educators. And so I would think that, you know, if we had less money to work with, it could potentially, you know, come off of that, maybe pay a portion of that first 12-week salary rather than the full amount. And I think that we will end up scaling up with this, we're looking at serving 30 new early educators per year over a three-year period of time, but I think that once our structure is in place, that we could potentially serve more. That, those basic employees that you bring in to be able to provide these services, I think they're going to be there for that lowest number of 30 per year, but we hope to go further than that.
Yeah, I would add the same thing, I think each of the programs is also designed as a three-year program, so they're, the Fast Track is a one-year, but the other programs are three-year programs, the Little Kids, as well as the, as the other Workforce Development Program, and they all have the same basic components, it's to pay for the hours that they're working, because they're not qualified to be alone with children, it becomes a burden on the childcare facility to pay that person to get the hours that they need to be certified. So it's this kind of, we have this, so it's helping that childcare facility, so I agree the way that it could be scaled is to ask a center to pay a portion of that, or a small amount of that, matching towards an allocation that can come in from another source, from Deschutes County potentially. Another potential is that we take the program and say, we want to do a couple fewer, and really invest over three years, or to take it to a two-year program would be another way of scaling it. So I think there's a couple of different options, we could treat it more as a pilot and say, after two years, let's check in, and is it meeting the outcomes we had expected it to achieve? And is there then an additional investment? So I think any investment in that area, as Amy said, it's a profession and a workforce that has been under-invested in, and if we can put some, some resources behind it, I think we can really work towards getting to that. Note that the outcome of these programs is actually meeting the total need of 333 potential educators in our region, so that we can grow our capacity from all the new great in-home providers that Ken is talking about with SBDC, and with new facilities that can be created then after that.
I just want to clarify that the Fast Track is three years, right now.
So we're talking about a $1.6 million line item, Fast Track program, three years, and the goal would be creating 90 certified teach, yeah, I guess the terminology I'm trying to get clear, teachers, which is a provider in a healthcare, in a childcare setting, so you gotta be careful with this. So teacher aide one and two, teacher home-based provider and head teacher, are those all in the same group of 90?
Yeah, so it would be teacher and head teacher in that category, teacher aides are, cannot be alone with children, so the goal is to move us towards teachers who are qualified to be alone with children, so you can staff an additional room, so either teacher or head teacher together.
So, and I want to get into this a little bit more then, so I mean, are these going to be certified people to work for a home-based provider, or would this be a home-based provider training ground for a mom that wants to open up too? You know, I'm thinking complementing the SBDC.
I'll let Karen answer that, but yes is the short answer.
Yes.
So for an in-home care provider, they have to qualify as a teacher, and this gets them to whether they want to work in a large center, they want to work in a home-based, they want to be a home-based provider, it's a pathway to any door that they want, any place for early childhood that they choose to work.
So is a teacher a qualification terminology by the early learning, the state?
Yes.
So if I have a home-based system, and I'm, you know, mom with, bringing in, that's a teacher at a home-based system with one person running a childcare.
And in a home-based program, you don't need to start with that qualification, you can start with less hours and not be teacher-qualified to be a home-based provider. We really strive to support those home-based providers to get up to that teacher qualification, because it opens up all sorts of opportunity for state and federal funding, which will stabilize their program. And what that is, is accessing programs like Baby Promise and Preschool Promise as we expand that mixed delivery, and so it's always a goal of ours, plus you just, you have an easier day as a provider when you have that additional education and support. For the teacher qualification, it really is a term that's used by licensing, and so when you get licensed and you open up classrooms in a certified center, which serves the majority of children in Deschutes County, what you're looking at is, with each classroom, you have to have a qualified teacher or qualified head teacher in those classrooms. And so that's really where that breakdown is right now. We have a lot of people who qualify as a teacher's aide, like Kelly was saying, they cannot be left alone with children, so this Fast Track focus is to get teacher-qualified early educators into classrooms in childcare centers to be able to expand the number of children who can be served.
So yeah, as I say, I'm just kind of a learning, and I've done some work on this, but now it's getting connected up, you know, so home-based provider could be a small provider without the teacher credentials, or you could work towards it, which, yeah, thank you very much for the explanation.
No, and I was really actually happy to hear from the Re Village program, where you're using existing churches, buildings, and parents actually come in and have, what is it, eight hours a month? I just really think that's wonderful, because you're giving people a reasonable price, what is it, $350 a month to pay? That's, that's a fair amount of funding, and it's not out of reach of some, you know, a lot of families, I mean, it's still, it's a lot, but then I heard from people last year that were paying $900 a month to have their child in a program, I mean, $900 a month, you know, when the schools weren't in session. So I really think we need to consider the Re Village program, because what they're doing, they're working on getting to Sisters, they're expanding, I think it's wonderful, and I thank you for doing that. I know it's not easy.
I'm really excited about that project too, I would love to just sort of run the workforce, you know, kind of the workforce investments kind of discussion to the, you know, to the ground, and make a proposal on that before we go on to talk about the capital construction projects. So it looks like if, you know, and, you know, thank you for kind of that explanation about scalability and kind of, you know, why the program is, and scalability and why it's scaled the way, you know, at the size it is right now. I guess what I'd like to propose is that for those two projects, for Fast Track and the Little Kids Internship, we would commit two years of funding now, and ideally, we would, you know, you would learn during those two years, the value of this, you know, the value of this kind of workforce training path, to the point that the centers in year three would be willing to pay a portion of the cost, they would see the value of that investment, and, you know, to get the qualified workers at the end of the process, and in two years, we try and figure out whether there's, you know, that there's, there would be some other, you know, some other way to continue to fund, you know, to provide some support for those programs. So that would knock off of the total workforce package, that would knock off about 950,000. And with that, I would, I would propose that we support all four of those items.
So just for a little bit more clarity, I'd like to learn a little bit, so a Little Kids program costing $1 million at OSU Cascades, $1 million at COCC, and $2 million for St. Charles, what is that purchasing? I mean, you know, because I understand, you know, land and a modular and getting some staff in there, but yeah, can you help flesh that out a little bit? Because, because then I'm seeing Little Kids internships as another line, and that's why I'm asking this question.
Yeah, so the facilities piece of it, the, so the facilities piece, there's two parts to the Little Kids, so there's, there is a new modular facility at, on OSU Cascades, OSU is offering the land project management infrastructure, as well as will operationalize the program and underwrite any, making sure that it remains affordable on the land in partnership with COCC's Early Learning, Early Childhood Group, I say the wrong thing every time.
You know, it's tricky.
So the $1 million is then leveraged by 1.5 million, part of that coming from state ARPA funds as allocated by Senator Canope, and then the rest of it, the $500,000 additional financial obligation is coming from OSU Cascades to support the development of the first facility. The second facility that's.
So it's truly capital costs at that point?
It's capital cost to construct a modular center. That modular design is intended to be replicable, so what we're doing is, we are having an early childhood center modular built in the state of Oregon that can be put now on any site, and that's where the St. Charles Boys and Girls Club Little Kids second facility comes in, is that St. Charles is offering the land and the utilities set up for five acres for two modular facilities to be co-located on that land. This funding is for the first modular facility, and that is for a pre-K with a, and an aftercare school age enrichment summer and aftercare program. Boys and Girls Club will then, and Boys and Girls and Club of Bend will then go through a capital campaign to fundraise for the second modular facility to be located on that same parcel, and the aftercare and school age program will transition to its own facility. So it will ultimately serve 200, so this is to use as, again, leveraging that capital campaign to get us to 200 additional children, primarily serving the healthcare community, starting with St. Charles, and then opening it up to the community to get our healthcare workers back to work and to work for the first time here in Deschutes County.
So what's, I guess what I'm, yeah, what's the scope of that building when you say modular? Is it, is there going to be 100 kids in that one building?
Think of it as a really nice portable, so it's still, it's a steel frame, it's not a, it's not a temporary structure, a five-year structure, it's probably a 20-year structure instead of a 50-year structure. It's designed around a specific footprint that maximizes the number of children in each classroom based on early learning division licensing requirements for square foot for child as well as student-to-teacher ratios. So it has classrooms, and then it has a small kitchen component, a small office space component for a director and the administration of the program, and then the outdoor play spaces associated with that would be built at the same time.
And then how big are the classrooms? I get, you know, I'm still trying to figure out, is this, is this a large facility, or?
You've got this little diagram.
Yeah, as I say, no, but I don't know how big that little diagram is going to be.
6,500 and 8,000 total square feet, so we're, that's the total square footage of the.
5,000 to 8,000?
6,500 to 8,000.
Okay, yeah, okay, that helps, that helps. I guess that was, yeah. How many square feet? I could have asked that straight up, I didn't know that was the question, but you know what I do.
But are you saying then that this, the 2.1 that they're asking for us is only for the first modular unit, is that what you just said?
It's for the first modular building on that site, they're offering the land and the infrastructure that comes to that site, and then it will be matched by dollars that we'll fundraise against to open the second.
So originally, it's only going to serve 100 kids, though?
Yes.
Okay.
But it billed out 200?
Yes.
So 6,500, we, our community justice department right now has a whole bunch of people working out of a kind of like more durable modular unit, and so I was trying to picture the scale of that, it's, this sounds much bigger than the scale of that modular building that community justice is working in.
Probably twice that size, I don't know what the square footage is offhand, but.
Yeah, so it's approximately, think six elementary school classrooms together in one facility, so it's about that size.
Six, hmm. Is it as big as a small school?
It's a small school.
So there's a proposal to take that workforce line, and the top number says 3325, but it's more like.
3125.
What's going to be the?
3125.
Uh, minus 950,000 was the proposal from Commissioner Chang is what I was referring to.
Right, so for the Fast Track and the Little Kids internships, we would, we would hold off on year three, and that would save, you know, that would reduce this request by something in the range of 950,000.
It's about 2,200 something or something.
To be.
But then, but they kind of need to go together with those other facilities, or not? I mean, I'm sure we'll get somewhere, but I'm thinking of the proportions, if we, he's referring to, you know, one year less of apprenticeship support upfront.
Well, the idea would be that you would have two years to essentially prove out these training programs, and then by the third year, hopefully, they would, they would demonstrate the value of it, and some of the providers who get the trainees working there would see the benefit of, oh, well, I'd be willing to pay for some of the 12 weeks that these people are here.
There's a flip side to this too, I mean, if we do two years and it isn't successful, is Deschutes County going to be expected to come up with, oh, well, we only committed to two, we should do the third, and we're not going to have ARPA dollars, and then we're going to be talking about general fund? So I mean, we've got to be careful with what that expectation is, you know, come back two years later, we're not going to have an ARPA fund like this. I mean, well, maybe, well, if we held it.
We wouldn't, we won't have an ARPA fund after three years either, I mean, so.
Well, that's my point though, I mean, if, yeah, what's the expectation? So that's interesting.
So, I mean, if you're actually trying to make the difference for the community, clearly, okay, it's going to take a year for the one we've already approved, you said, right, Kelly? That it would be, hopefully by next fall, it's going to be open. So truly, we're putting all this attention into childcare, and I would hope that in two years, we would see the benefits of what we're doing, and I mean, honestly, with Re Village, you're already, you're already there in the public, you're already trying to add on currently, and, you know, if the class is already going, so.
Mr. O'Dear, if I might add, we actually have opened up, so we call it Little Kids, that's the Future Modular Center, we actually have opened up on OSU Cascades as funding the opening and development of a childcare facility where we've taken classrooms offline. So we are, we've opened up to 28 children, and it actually opened up Monday of this week. That is a temporary facility until we get to the, to the new center, we have capacity for 28, and we have filled those 28 slots, slots, and have 75 additional children on the waitlist.
So that's 100, that's 100 children right there, if we had this open next fall?
And we have some people calling us already saying, "I'm pregnant, I think I will need childcare about this time, can you put them on a waitlist?" Just to demonstrate that there is a capacity need in Central Oregon, in particular for infant care is where we're hearing, and I know Karen can talk to the demand.
So, yeah, interesting. Okay, as I say, I mean, we're kind of going around in circles.
Two years is also long enough to understand whether this is the right training approach, I mean, whether this works or not, and if not, I mean, there will be other ideas and learning about what a different training approach would be, so.
The next question is, I mean, is this, is this kicking off something that's going to sustain itself?
Without.
Or?
Without, um-
I mean, yeah, what does it look like four years from now?
A million dollars being infused.
There's going to be a group in front of the commission saying, man, we're so close, but we need this much, which wouldn't be ARPA dollars. So I, just a, a future question.
With these funds, with a two-year program, I don't think there's a need for an additional match. We've already, the match has already been contributed by those organizations, so it's Karen's time, it's my time, it's the access to the facilities that have already been opened up for it, it's leveraging our director, it's leveraging the qualified faculty at COCC and OSU Cascades to teach those courses. So it's, we're already leveraging all of the, the support system that's available in the system through both organizations like Neighbor Impact, Childcare Resources, the Early Learning Hub, as well as both of our two institutions of higher education. And so what happens after two years is that we can't offer the pay for those new people coming into the market. So it doesn't break the system, what it does is it means we aren't going to build the workforce as fast as we have up until then. But hypothetically, we've already, if the programs are successful as they've been outlined, we've now met our early childcare workforce need, and we're out of this emergent or urgent cycle of not having enough workforce, and now we're back into continuing to grow our, our workforce with the traditional programs that we've had, and the new programs now that we've added to the table, including an apprentice program that is being funded by ELD in partnership with East Cascade Works and COCC and Neighbor Impact, as well as professional development programs that are ongoing in the community. So that's why all those pathways are really important to creating. So when this funding goes away, nothing breaks, it continues, we've now got our workforce, and we're continuing to, to support that workforce who's now in the marketplace.
I mean, I'd also like to point out that we would love to come out of these investments in a couple of years and have a system that's fully functioning and fully meeting the need, and, and that works. But the issue is that we don't have a system that works right now, otherwise, we wouldn't have the childcare desert that we have. So in many ways, I think this is, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of this as kind of like a moonshot, you know? This is, this is an opportunity to put some serious attention, put, you know, some great minds and some investment in, you know, into this thing in a, in a, in a big way that will hopefully get us to a place that, that works, because what we have right now doesn't work. And, but, you know, I say that also because if we come out of the end of this and we've made a dent, but we're not, and we, but we haven't been fully successful, I, I don't want us to, I don't want people to say like, oh, you know, it didn't work. Because, you know, if you take something that's broken, and you try and fix it, and you make it a little better, but you don't get it all the way, it's not that it didn't work, it's, it's that there were so many challenges with the, the structure of childcare currently, that maybe they were overwhelmed, well, you know, they were overwhelming. So, I, you know, I, for me, coming out of this and seeing some, you know, success metrics, you know, we did, we did create this many childcare workers, you know, and we've seen, you know, we've seen businesses start and continue, and, you know, maybe not all of them, maybe many people have, have tried this sector and, and left, but, you know, if we have, you know, if we've, you know, if we've prepared people, if we see some new starts and some new entries, and some of those stick, then that might be some good indicators of success.
Thank you. So we're talking about spending more than our $2 million bucket already here today, so now I guess, how, how do we want to proceed? That's where I'm starting to go. We're talking about next year's allocation at this time, when we start doing that?
Yeah, you can certainly do that. Remember, next year is May, so.
Yeah, I mean, this fiscal year still, so it's not risky, but it's acknowledging that's what we're doing here.
And, and there's not a, there's not a concern about cash flow, that's something we'll manage, to make sure that we, we take care of that as well. So.
So we start off with a-
We're in the second, we're in the middle of the second year of the ARPA funding.
Yeah. So that's, yeah, that, as I say, as soon as we make a choice here, we're already talking about going past that $2 million allocation bucket that we had just started with, which is just a starting point.
I just, the, the half a million asked for the small center capacity fund, the fact that the state has the 248 million out there, I really would, would like to hold off till at least next May in order to, if we need to fund that at that point in time. It just seems like, okay, it doesn't sound like the people are going to be ready to ask for those funds, you know, they're not licensed yet, but would they need that kind of funding now, or could next, maybe soon enough?
So I can, I can answer a little bit of that, and if I miss something, let me know. So we've had several other requests, smaller centers that have asked for funding assistance in addition to the folks who have been represented here. And that's what this is supposed to entail, is a bucket of money that can help them expand their childcare facilities and add slots there. The, the advantageous component of it, I think from our perspective, is that we have a list, or we have a group of experts here who, through this proposal, would essentially manage that. And so that, there would be some consistency across, across the entire county. And again, this was, this whole proposal was, the purpose of this was to identify the gaps across the board, whether it was more of an institutional setting, or more of a mom and pop setting, and to come back with a, a way to actually get our best return on investment in terms of filling those slots and setting us up for the long term.
Another way to look at this is, if we create this program, the dollars come with technical assistance that could help people be successful. I, I, you know, I've seen, in, in the world of natural resource management, I've seen a whole bunch of dollars be made available for farmers and, and rural landowners to do good stuff on their property. But if you don't have the, the human attention that goes with that, to, to, to sometimes, you know, offer advice, you know, connection to, to resources, th, those dollars aren't spent nearly as well, and the, the projects aren't nearly successful. So what I really like about this, this approach is that people aren't just sending a request to, you know, kind of the, you know, the faceless state of Oregon, they're, they're making contact with, you know, an expert, a technical assistance provider here in, you know, in our community, who can, you know, go back and forth with them a little bit about, you know, well, you know, what do you, what do you think you need, and how does a, you know, how could these dollars help you? And I think we will see better investments made, you know, with that kind of personal attention.
So now, I'm kind of backing myself into a one o'clock start for a public hearing today. Are we getting to a point where we're going to be able to kind of pass a package? As I say, I mean, this is way past a $2 million bucket, which, which we already spent a million on.
Right, we were, originally, we were going to spend 3 million, so if we're talking about spending seven of the 38 million, that's 18% of the ARPA funds. So that's up to 18%. And that's not what we originally talked about, and so I'm just kind of worried, are we going to find out that we've actually, you know, I know this is an important issue, but, you know, can we really go and spend 7 million on this?
Well, and as I say, I started off saying, well, let's get to something, I want to spend some money, and now I'm like, oh, this is huge, so.
These-
All right, yeah, I'm just thinking, what are we going to get down to the next 10 minutes?
We've known, we've known that, we've known that ARPA dollars would be available for at least a half a year now. The things that people have wanted to request are largely in the door at this point, so we have a sense of the universe of requests. And again, I, I would just emphasize that-
Are we ready to get something done today in 10 minutes, is my-
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think, I am comfortable spending something in the range of 7 million dollars today, or allocating something in the range of 6 million additional dollars today, you know, for this critical community need.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I'm just not ready, and, yeah, to make that decision today. I could see breaking this up and working our way through it, which may add up to that number, but I'm just thinking, I, I'm not comfortable kind of diving into that whole thing right now.
So can we, can we talk about what that looks like? What that process looks like? How long it'll take? What, what do you need?
Oh, yeah, so, I mean, I'm just thinking, time, I mean, another half hour, 45 minutes with us working together, that we can land either some of this, or, you know, whatever amount we're going to land, and then, you know, it'll be, you know, follow on from there. So what are your thoughts for right now?
Actually, I, I think if we, if Greg wouldn't mind to bring it back on Monday, I don't know, whatever, if we have a huge Monday agenda or not, but I would just like to go, okay, so, because in my head, I was never spending, you know, 7 million dollars here, even though I know it's critical, I know we've got to change the MO of our community, but still, I want to make sure that there isn't, you know, there isn't a lot of other millions that need to be spent over here.
Well, so I'm in-
I asked if we could, I asked if our Monday agenda could be a little bit thinner, because I have a, a hard stop time at 2:45, so.
At 2:45?
On Monday, yes.
Okay.
So I, I would be, I'd be more, I'd be more willing to, to pick this right back up after we finish our public hearing today.
I've got a co-op meeting today, and, that I have, a state meeting. Yes, next Wednesday works?
What is, yeah.
I don't, I think one week, I think the group of people that are here-
Well, I think we're close, though, I mean, that's the answer, we're close.
The group of people that are here, I, I so appreciate all the work you've done. The other side of the story, though, is that I had somebody come to me who runs a childcare, and they said, oh, my gosh, if you guys are going to now start paying all this, they're worried they're going to lose all their help, because there's going to be more money somewhere else in the county. So, you know, that's, that's an unintended consequence.
Yeah, so let's dig in.
I actually don't see how that, I, I don't really understand that. I mean, you know, they're, you're paying, you know, training dollars for people who are, are starting, you're making capital investments, but we're not, we're not supplementing the pay for some childcare providers versus, versus others.
What is the pay, though, Kelly? Didn't we, wasn't that part of the program? You guys wanted to pay people more what they're worth, because normally, historically, the industry doesn't pay quite as much.
So specifically for the Little Kit Center, they would be SEIU representative employees and meeting the teacher qualifications of those roles, so they would be, yes, benefited, they would be living wages and benef, fully benefited roles underneath the union, on the Oregon Public Employees Union.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so next Wednesday, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that, let's bring it home next Wednesday. So thank you very much, as I say, we're close, if you can see how we're kind of struggling with time and the big picture of the money. But this is very helpful and very informative, and thank you very much for getting such a great group together for this discussion.
Thank you all very much for being here today, and, and for laying this framework for us, that, that is very helpful for thinking about how to turn the dial on this issue.
Okay, so we're going to take our lunch break, but for a, we do have a kind of a time certain present, or a, a public hearing at 1 o'clock today, and we'll be back for that.
Okay.
Welcome back to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is our afternoon session. At this time, a one o'clock public hearing in consideration of Cascade Medical Transport as a proposed subcontractor to provide certain ambulance services for the Lapine Rural Fire Protection District. Chris Bell, thank you very much for kicking us off here and let's go.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you know, and as you just said, today is the date set for a public hearing on the issue. The ultimate question is whether the board should authorize Cascade Medical Transport of Oregon as a subcontractor of the Lapine Rural Fire Protection District. As you know, the district provided the proposal back in mid-June. I think they received it on June 17th. The county has been working with the district on acquiring some information, and the district has provided the board and the county with quite a bit of materials and information in support of their proposal. And I believe CMT is also, I'm calling Cascade Medical Transport of Oregon CMT, and Lapine Rural Fire Protection District, the district, just for brevity's sake. CMT has provided some information with respect to all the things that they're required to provide under the code, which is essentially the same information that a potential franchisee would be required to provide to the code, or excuse me, to the commission, the Board of Commissioners in order to become a franchisee. So today, I think, is intended to provide the board with further information with public testimony or discussion on the merits of subcontracting with CMT. I think you'll have both information or comments and discussion that's both for it and also some concerns about it. And I think everybody here is just in the mode of fact-finding, trying to get as much information from as many stakeholders as possible, and then coming to a decision. I don't think the board is necessarily required to come to a decision today. Again, the primary purpose is fact-finding, and as we have discussed, I think there are some other folks who want to provide information to be considered by the board, those being the ASA Advisory Committee, who has provided and will provide recommendations or concerns with respect to the proposal. The board, I think, legal would recommend that the board take a close look at those concerns or comments and consider those before coming to a decision. And I think also Kafka, the Central Oregon Fire Chief Association, they've also expressed a desire to provide input, to take a look at the written draft proposal and also just the proposal in general, and provide any feedback they have to the board before the board actually makes a decision. It's my understanding that that, Kafka's next meeting is October 21st. Chief Kemna from Redmond Fire in particular has said that they would really like to take a look at this kind of holistically as to how it might impact other districts and other fire agencies within the area. And so I think that's going to happen on the 21st, so at least legal's recommendation is that the board consider all that information before making a decision. And with that, I will leave it to the board.
Great. So this is a public hearing on the matter, and for my other commissioners, you know, I've been involved with this from a lot of different sides. I really wanted to be up to speed with it. It's been a request to the ASA for a while. We did change the ASA franchise code to even allow this application. So, and this is a public hearing on the matter, so input to the board is going to be the goal for today, and a very public forum, obviously. Can I little bit help with procedure? So, as I say, I think of a land use matter where there's an applicant and a palette, but we're not there. Can you help us with the?
Sure. This isn't a land use hearing, of course, but certainly the party is, in essence, with the burden of proof, in essence, would be Lapine Fire, the district that's asking you to approve of this agreement. So I would suggest that they be given the opportunity, and anybody that's going to provide testimony on their behalf to go first, and then anybody else that has anything to say.
And then Lapine Fire being kind of, yeah, the burden of, I don't know if it's proof or the burden, to be able to respond also, because, I mean, because we could end up...
You could certainly allow some sort of a response period if you chose to do it here in person. You could do it by written documents from all the parties for that matter. You could treat it like a legislative matter, because it does kind of spin off a legislative amendment.
So, and that's, I think that's, you know, my thought upfront. So an application by the district, spokesman for the district, please, you know, join us for testimony on the matter. Doesn't have to be three minutes, because this is kind of laying out the picture. Three minutes is a timing system we do have in place. We have Sharon upstairs. We'll start a clock, and that's just a guidance we've seen through other public testimony. Three minutes, you can get a whole lot of ideas across if you know what you're going to say. So then, as I say, if the three minutes is over, we'll know if we're going to ask somebody to, you know, please wrap up, or if we're going to keep going. And then also, there could be questions by the commissioners that really provide that interaction, you know, during testimony also. And then, you know, closing remarks possibly today or written testimony afterwards by the district is what I'm envisioning. Okay, so, yeah, please.
Just one thing to add, commissioners, just for your information, it's my understanding that we have today, we have Tom Kuhn, who's the ASA Advisory Committee Administrator, in addition to his duties with the county. He is online with us today, as well as, it's my understanding, three of the four businesses or the, three of the four addresses that are identified in the proposed agreement, specifically, three of those four addresses have current actively running businesses on them. And it's my understanding we have representatives from all three, including Charlotte DeHate and Courtney, I'm sorry, I don't have her last name, but I think she's here. Courtney, what's your last name?
Ignazito.
Ignazito are here from Lapine Community Health. Love Pearson is the Director of Prairie Memory Care, and I believe, is she here today? She's on Zoom. Also, from St. Charles-Lapine Clinic is Oliver Tatum and Mike Richards, who I believe are both here. And then, from the ASA Advisory Committee online right now, we have Jared Ernest from Black Butte Ranch Fire, Jared Jeffcott from Sun River Fire Department, Ken Kemna from Redmond Fire and Rescue, Drew Norris from the City of Bend Fire Department, and Jeremy Ast from Sisters Fire. I believe that's it. So just so you all know, that I believe they all may want to participate in testimony in the discussion as well.
So then, let's get clear about filling out a testimony form. Is that suggested, or, I mean, this is, we kind of know the body of people ready to speak already.
Yeah, I mean, you certainly can. We have forms, I think we use, forums up here if you are, plan to testify. We could utilize that if you'd like. I don't know how you're going to do it with the folks online, but...
Oh, yeah, traditionally, we've filled out the blue form, put them in a stack, and then, so I can just flip through them one at a time. And, yeah, let's go with that as much as we can, you know, name and contact info. And then, as I say, that'll just give us an organization to get through the...
It allows for a cleaner record, too.
Yeah, okay.
And then, we'll go through those, and then we'll let the people who are online have an opportunity as well.
Oh, absolutely, yes. So I want to thank everybody for joining us here today, too. This, work our way through. Now, Commissioner Dare, did you, you mentioned a meeting this afternoon.
I have a COACT meeting for the state. That's at two o'clock. So, I mean, I know I need to listen to this. So it's from two to 4:30, so hopefully...
May I step out at some point?
I don't know. Well, I need, I need to, this is more important, but I'm still sleeping on that other meeting at two o'clock.
Good.
You know, the story of life.
Well, thank you very much. Let's get rolling here, then. So, as I say, for the fire district, if it's the chief or a board member that's going to start. Okay, Fire Chief, Mike Supkis. I do have a blue page right here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Supkis, Fire Chief, Lapine Fire. All right.
Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's been a long time coming. As commissioners know, this fire district has been working with, and most of the people in this room know, that this idea started almost two years ago. And as we were looking at how to do resources and provide better services as a community in South Deschutes County, the idea of a public-private partnership was developed. And initially, we thought we could just step into it like other fire districts or service areas in this community. CMT is currently providing ambulance services to citizens in this community. However, at the time, going for DSA board net, it felt it was most appropriate that we needed to have some tweaking of the ambulance service area plan to allow a public-private partnership, its potential to be used in the Lapine area. That was initiated over a year ago with the course of several meetings, and Commissioner DeBoeck, you were part of that process, and fact-finding and gathering and things like that. And so, that took place, and then accumulated it in February of this year. The county, after having public hearings, approved a amendment to your ordinance 2021-03, which is your Chapter 8.030 of your ambulance service area plan, that puts in a whole section that allows the franchisee holder, Lapine Fire, to apply for subcontracting for additional resources to serve the community. And it requires a, after we submit that information to the county, it requires a vote of the county commissioners and a review every two years. And that's where we're at now. We made that initial, after the ambulance service area plan was changed so we could do that, the fire district board submitted letters to each of the county commissioners and to the county to make that change as quickly as possible because of the emergency situation the district is in, and I'll speak to that in a moment, and then have that, to be able to add additional private, public-private partnership resources to our ambulance run card. And in specific, we wanted to narrow it to specific addresses we felt that would be most beneficial for the serving in the public. That has been done. Since then, Commissioner DeBoeck has met with my board several times. Letters have gone back and forth. Lots of information's been handed. Everybody sitting at that table has gotten everything in this folder. And then last week, the ambulance service area board had a meeting. However, Lapine Fire was not invited to that, neither was our board-appointed position. And from that meeting, I understand there may be some questions, may not be, but I'm going to be blunt, it seems like the county wanted to get to the finish line on this with everyone promised they were going to do a year and a half ago. We would quit throwing marbles on the sidewalk. The information's been provided to the county multiple times. It's been provided to all the people that have inquired or asked. It's been a transparent public process, and now it's time to do this. And why is it time to do this? Well, it because, basically, the citizens of South County are not being properly served. And this is your fire chief telling you this. Our call volume has gone up over 40% in the last couple months, and what it really comes down to is that we're now, call volume is exceeding the district capacity to service residents. It's not just medical calls, but it's also fire calls, because the one crew does both medical and fire. On September 13th, we had a record 19 calls in a 24-hour period for two crews. On September 9th this last month, we had 15 calls with a record 11 transports. Now, note, a transport takes anywhere from two to two and a half hours to take that crew out of the community. This is not a transport across town, across the street, or even down to the next town eight miles south. This is a 35-mile transport from the core of Lapine. So in September, we had 21 days, we were over capacity, and July was 22, and June 21. The bottom line is, 434 times this year, we had delayed responses to emergency calls. Compared that to last year, we had 263 delayed responses up until October. What I mean by delayed response is that when someone requesting aid from 911 either for emergency medical call or for emergency fire call, and help isn't as quick as it should be. 434 times so far this year, citizens of our fire district, citizens of South Deschutes County, had to wait longer than necessary for services because of lack of resources. Now, that doesn't mean much for just numbers, but let's put that in perspective. Over the last six months, our district has responded to 47 Code 99s. In the simplest form, to keep it real simple here, a Code 99 means your heart has stopped before the ambulance has arrived. Forty-seven citizens of our community heart stopped before we could arrive with an ambulance. On the fireside, everyone talks about the Darlene Fire and how the Lapine area was so lucky this year that it didn't rip through the community. And it's only through the good graces of our mutual aid partners and the help that we received, it was caught in the first operational period. But let me think about something. Five families lost their homes in that fire. Seventeen structures were lost. Twenty-one vehicles were lost. Even though it was right outside of our fire district, and it did burn into our fire district, our fire district did not respond with its full complement of resources because some of our crews were on medical calls. They were unavailable. So the question is, what if Lapine Fire was able to put a full heavy wildland response together on that fire and caught it at the initial acre two? The fire, by the way, was caused by a dispersed campsite on BLM land. What if we would have caught it at that initial fire spot? Five families in our, in our, in our community would still have homes? This is more reaching in just one medical call, one ambulance, one that. It's essential that the county act that allowed the Lapine Fire District to add more resources to its roster. And that's what I had.
Great, thank you so much.
I got one more thing. About the public-private partnership, there's been a lot of questions about it. I know it's new for this area, but when the board directed its staff, my board, directed its staff to think out of the box and try to figure out what can we do for resources, raise taxes, add folks, by the way, our fire district has added five new firefighters in the last five years, four of them in new positions. The district has been growing, but it has to do responsibly, what we concur to. We came up with this public-private partnership, and we looked at Warshent County, Oregon. We looked at Clackamas County, Oregon. We looked at Santa Clara, California, and we looked at Solano County, California, and their public-private partnership, where they use the best of public services and they use the best of private services to serve the community. I think it's about time that Deschutes County also look at that. Again, I can't emphasize you the urgency of this situation, that we need to have these resources available. I can't imagine why anybody in this room would be opposed to it. Legal Counsel Bell says there's always lots of questions. I would hope those questions could be answered, and I'd be more than happy to answer all of them, but I do want, do not want those questions delay your action any further. So with that said, I thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So Dick Swales, so I'm just going through the blue pages as I receive them at this time, and I think Nick has more.
Yes, my name is Dick Swales. I'm a director for the Lapine Rural Fire Protection District. Just want to say that I obviously agree wholeheartedly with what the chief has said. I think it's important that the board understands what our staffing requirement is and how it works. Our line personnel wear two hats. They wear both fire protection and they wear paramedic hats. They're on staff 48 hours on, 96 hours off. If we put on one ambulance and we want to provide coverage 24 hours, seven days a week, 365, we have to put on three crews to do that, just because of the 48-96. That gets exceedingly expensive to the district. So what we're looking at in the private-public partnership is how do we stopgap that? And the best we can come up with at this particular time is to partner with Cascade Medical Transport. It's also important to know that this does not cost the county or our district a cent, nothing. They're responsible for their own billing. We don't get involved in it. So, to us, at least to me, I don't understand what the, what the hangup is on this, and I have yet to get a coherent response on why is this taking so long? And we've got three people up there in the board. It takes two of you to say yes, and we really kind of expect something to happen. We don't want to stall this anymore. Our next crunch date is coming up on the 18th of this month, where everybody has to be vaccinated. If they're, if they're not, they're out of a job. We have a fairly high vaccination rate, but it's not 100%. So we lose one person, we lose half a crew. We lose two persons, we lose a full crew. How do we replace those people? Well, we can do it very easily with this public-private partnership. I encourage you to vote this in, and let's, you know, get the ball rolling here, just stop dragging feet. I think we've responded with all the information that we've been asked to provide on numerous occasions, and we're still at the, we're at the same starting point. So, I urge you to act on this and act quickly. That's, thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Hubbard, and following will be Jim Landals.
All right, Jerry Hubbard, live in Sun River. I spent 10 years on the Board of Directors of Lapine Fire, and currently, the board has asked me to be a volunteer dealing with public affairs. And so, my task is to reach out to the, to the US senators, to congressmen, or Oregon State Senators and reps that, that are in our district. And so my, my goal is to raise $13 million to hire 18 firefighter paramedics in over a five-year period. And that will allow us to expand our emergency medical services and our transports to residents in South Deschutes County. And so it's really critical to have more staff, and so our job is to go out and try to find $13 million to pay for 18 firefighter paramedics over the five-year period. And so it's really critical to add more staff, and it's really critical for, to add another resource, CMT, to South County, because it doesn't cost anybody any money. There's no liability to the county commissioners. So it's a win-win to bring another ambulance and another, another couple of paramedic people to South Deschutes County. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Jim Landals, Director of Lapine Rural Fire Department. I can't add a whole lot more than the two of them said, but without this PPP enacted fairly soon, more people are going to go without the services that we desperately want to provide for them, and most of the citizens don't realize that they could be in jeopardy because of the delayed responses. And we're really hoping that Jerry is successful in his bid to get more funding for us. We thought about going to the voters, but in Lapine, the, the tax base is capped, and if, if we were to get an approval from the voters to get more money from the homeowners, then someone else in Lapine goes without. The, the city itself has to give up something if, if the voters approve our increase. So it's, it's just not that simple. And so we pray that you will find a, an affirmative answer for us very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dare, for the testimony. So I think for the tax-based cap, you're referring to compression, which is referring to the total tax rate. And that'd be interesting, just letting the other commissioners know, you know, that'd be an interesting kind of analysis that we could put on paper and say, okay, if there was a dollar more, it really isn't a dollar more, and other districts would be compressed also. So that, that'd be an interesting thing to follow up on.
I'd be curious to know whether that is also the case if the district wanted to pursue an operating levy, like a...
Yeah, so this analysis could be done there.
Yeah, I mean, I, just under my impression, the operating levies, they don't require that you take it out of someone else's district, but...
At the end, so keep notes, because then that'll just be one of the topics, please. So next is Robin Adams. And then following that will be Vern Walter also.
Thank you for allowing us to speak today. I don't have much to add to what my partners on the board have already said, other than I understand other agencies' concerns about allowing private entity into our public resources. However, our end of the county is growing. We expect tax revenues eventually to flow downhill and help us fund more positions. That's a couple of years off, and as the chief eloquently said, our need is now. And all I would reiterate is, we have people who need care, and we don't have another good solution to provide those resources at this time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vern Walter, and then Charlotte DeHate, following that.
Okay, I'm Vern Walter. Bear with me, public speaking is not my forte. I took most of my thoughts off the proposed contract that is between Lapine Fire and CMT. And my first point is, Lapine Fire always gives a perception to the community and through the media that the Lapine ambulance is a fee-based system, and that they get their fees from fees charged by the ambulance, and it is not tax-based. That is mentioned in the second whereas... That is mentioned in the second whereas in this contract, and it is also mentioned on the Lepine Fire Department website, where they say when the ambulance service was enacted, it was to be fee-based, not taxpayer-supported, and all the major funding was to come from fees. My point is, that's not true today. It might have been true back in 1987. It's not true today. The three ambulances that the Lepine Fire has were purchased with taxpayer money on a 10-year operating levy. Two of the ambulances are staffed and maintained, according to the five-year operating levy that states that 24/7, seven days a week, taxpayer, this five-year levy is maintaining. So Lepine Fire would have us believe that because the ambulance service is fee-based, and the growth in the area, and the second medical facility that came to the area is increasing demand, and it's overrunning, and the fees just can't keep up. I propose that, and that's why we're all here, we're trying to find help to the ambulance. My proposal, or my idea is, we're not here because increased growth in the second medical facility has outstripped the supply or the ambulance. We're here because the Lepine ambulance has failed to provide provisions for the ambulance to keep up with the growth, that they spend the money elsewhere. And my reasoning for this is, this is 2021. On the five-year levy that we're operating on, it states maintains two 24/7, seven days a week, paramedics in service. This five-year levy became operational in 2019, which is a renewal of the operation levy from 2014. In 2014, it says maintain two paramedic ambulances in service 24/7. The 2014 five-year levy was a renewal of the 2009 five-year levy. Let me read, this is a letter that the chief wrote in 2018, when he was getting support for the five-year levy. It says, "This measure is a renewal of the five-year local option levy for operations. The existing levy expires July 2019, and a proposed measure would extend the existing tax rate 0.64 per thousand dollars for another year. The district has been using this local option levy since 1998 to ensure adequate responses to fire medical emergencies, which voters have renewed four times." So in 2021, taxpayers paid for two ambulances. 2019, they paid for two ambulances. 2014, they paid for two ambulances. 2009, they paid for two ambulances, all the way back to 1998. Do you see any progress, or any growth, or any extra monies that is provided to the Lepine ambulance that would enable them to grow with the community? They've been stuck at two ambulances for years. Now, of course, the Lepine Fire is going to say, "We didn't have the money. We didn't have the money to do this." Well, let's go through that scenario again. In the 2019 or 2021, the operating budget that we're operating under now, quoting the chief's letter, allows for staffing of a third ambulance or engine company, which is a renewal of the 2014 five-year levy, which stated in its thing, allows for staffing of a third ambulance or fire company, which is a renewal of the 2009, et cetera, et cetera, all the way back to 1998. So they've had the opportunity to fund a third ambulance for years and haven't done it. You would have thought that a perfect time for them to do that would have been in 2015, if I can find it here. 2015. Here's an article from the Bulletin, a big splash. "Lepine Rural Fire Protection District is Debt-Free: First Time Ever." 2015. In this article, they state they save $80,000 a year by not paying fees and taxes. So now they're debt-free, they're saving $80,000 a year. You'd think, let's staff a third ambulance. Did they do that? No. They have never staffed a third ambulance. It would be an interesting comparison to go back to 1998. See, all the money that's been spent on the fire for facilities, for remodels of stations, for added personnel, for trucks for the fire department officers to drive around in, all the money that has been spent since 1998 on allowing the fire department to keep up with the growth, and compare that to the amount of money spent since 1998 to the ambulance service to allow them to keep up with the growth. And I think you would see that there's a vast difference.
Yeah, wrap it up now.
Pardon?
Could you wrap it up now? I just, it hasn't, you know, it's gonna be a long day if we let everybody go.
Okay, I gotta wrap it up. One more point.
Okay.
CMT, I was hoping CMT would be here. It says in this contract that CMT has the right, maintains the right for billing, that they can bill facilities, a patient, and so on. CMT, I was gonna ask them, if they're in Bend and Redmond and transport a patient with a medical emergency from their primary care doctor to the hospital, who would they bill? And I assume, I'm not speaking for them, but I'm assuming they bill the patient. So why is the word "facility" in this contract? Are we going to force CMT to change their business practices, the way they do business now, just because they're 30 miles down the road so that they comply with the fire department? And if they do, the fire department, I've attended fire department meetings, and they allow some invoices to be passed, and they disallow a lot. They must have a criteria in which they determine which category those fall in. So they must have regulations, policy, guidelines, or something that says, okay, on this invoice, we're gonna bill the patient, and on this invoice, we're gonna bill the facility. CMT would like a copy of that list, that criteria, whatever it is, so that they, if they are forced to change their billing practices, at least will be in continuity with what the fire department does.
Thank you very much. And so that question's on the record now, so that we'll, you know, I'll definitely be looking for that information. Next is Charlotte DeHate, and following that will be Courtney.
Hello, I'm Charlotte DeHate. I'm the CEO of Lepine Community Health Center. Thank you, commissioners, for taking the time to listen to us about this important situation that we have in our community. I'm going to give you a brief history, primarily for Commissioners Adair and Chang, since you have not been with us for this whole process. In 2016, we had a meeting with then Commissioner Tammy Bany, St. Charles, Lepine Fire District, Lepine Community Health Center. And at that meeting, Chief Supkus and I were asked to work together to assist with the growing needs of the emergency transports. Chief had already been in conversation with Patrick from Cascade Medical Transportation. And although I can't speak to the conversations that Chief Supkus and Patrick had, I was eventually told by Patrick that they would need to have four to five transports per day, five days per week, in order to have a unit in Lepine. I was also told that he would have to have three to four transports to make this with a unit from Bend. For perspective, in 2020, Lepine Community Health Center had approximately 25,000 visits to our clinics. We had a total of 26 calls to 911. In 2021, we're on track for an even greater number of patients to visit our clinics, and we have activated 911 17 times. In 2016, I was no longer participating in the conversations regarding this need. It kind of just dropped by the wayside. But as you can see, it took five years for us to get us to this point, actually, four years. Because in, I'd like to make a point, in 2018, when St. Charles opened their medical clinic in Lepine, our 911 calls at Lepine Community Health Center dropped by about 50%. So we went from 50 calls per year to 25. We believe that this is primarily because the community believes that the St. Charles clinic there in Lepine is an emergency department. If you Google "emergency department" and you're in Lepine, the St. Charles clinic in Lepine shows up. In reality, their clinic there is the same as our clinic, a primary care facility. So in 2020, after the fire district began billing the Lepine Community Health Center rather than the patient's insurance, and when we called 911 for emergency transports, I stated at a fire district board meeting that this is a community issue, and as such, the fire district should be bringing this to the attention to our elected representatives and the community at large. I offered to organize a community meeting, and we did so. The first meeting was in May of 2020. At that meeting, it was recommended that we work with the ASA committee regarding this situation. I attended a special meeting in July of 2020 and explained the needs of the community, and the chief discussed the opportunity to use CMT as a subcontractor to the Lepine Fire District, and that was well-received. An ASA work group was formed, and the commissioners have been informed of this work. Now we're in a crisis situation, and as a representative of Lepine Community Health Center, I do agree that CMT should be a part of our solution regarding emergency transports. Regarding the partnership agreement, I believe that the way it is currently written does not meet the needs of the Lepine community. The agreement is written from the bias that the fire district has towards the two primary care clinics, and instead, it should be focused on what is best for the community as a whole, allowing CMT to operate through 911 dispatch as part of a team responding to the needs of the whole community. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. So Courtney Ingagzneado, darn it, CIA, I didn't even want to deal with it. She's also, she's also a city councillor, so welcome to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to provide feedback. I think that one thing we can agree on is that everyone in this room has a deep desire to care for the health and welfare of the community members, and we want to see a solution here. And I do want to make sure that it is understood that Lepine Community Health Center is not against the solution, is not against adding resources. That has become a perception, I think, because we have some differing views and some different ideas on how this could be solved, but we really do want to see a solution happen, and we do, like Charlotte said, believe that CMT should be part of this. The public-private partnership would be a great step forward, and if I'm understanding the contract currently as written, it would only allow CMT to respond to calls at specific addresses, the healthcare clinics and assisted living facilities, and then also assist in disaster response if the district's resources have been exhausted. And if I'm understanding that correctly, I fear that we may be missing an opportunity for a more effective solution for the community, whereas if CMT has the capacity and would agree to taking on an even heavier load from the district and be able to respond to the community's calls at large versus just specific addresses, that that could really be a great opportunity here. I was hoping that CMT would be here, but I'm sure that you will reach out with your questions to them. But if they're able to take on more, I think that that would be a more effective solution for our community, because there is no doubt that our EMS resources are stretched thin between our rapidly growing little community and also the increase that we've had in medical issues, I think that have kind of dominoed from this COVID pandemic. We absolutely, we absolutely need a solution. So also, as wearing both hats from Lepine Community Health Center and as a city councillor, we share a common goal here to take care of our community members, and I would just like to see this agreement broadened, if it's possible, so that it could take care of more patients. So, thank you so much. I appreciate you for listening.
Great, thank you so much. Mike Richards, and then following that will be Oliver Tatum.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Mike Richards. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Vice President of Operations for St. Charles Medical Group. I'd also like to thank the fire district for all the good work that they do. I personally used to be an EMT and a firefighter for eight years, albeit with a Forest Service hotshot crew and not a district like you guys, but I really do have a lot of respect for the work they do and the good they do in the community. To echo what many others have said, we don't have any issue with the fire district getting more resources. As a matter of fact, we advocate for the fire district and do believe that they need more resources to be able to adequately support the needs of the Lepine community. We support that 100%. The public-private partnership as written, we believe, has a couple of things that do need to be changed to adequately meet that need of the community, however. The agreement does refer, in a few places, to intra-facility transfers. We disagree with that characterization. Our clinics call 911 when we have an emergency. We're not calling to transfer a patient from one facility to another. As an example, when we need to transfer a patient from our Redmond Hospital to a Bend hospital for capacity reasons, we do call CMT, and we have a contract with them, and we pay them for that transport. It is not an emergency, it's an intra-facility transfer. In this instance, that we experienced in the Lepine clinic, we have true medical emergencies. We have patients that are frequently having a heart attack or a stroke, and it is an emergency, and they need to go to a higher level of care and an emergency department to get the proper treatment or to rule out that that is not what is happening. And we, when that is happening, it is important that whatever crew shows up, and if that's CMT, that's great, they have great qualified personnel, and we're fine with them showing up. But that response time needs to be appropriate as well. I believe that current, the public-private partnership as written today has a response time of 43 minutes. Our location within the city of Lepine, I believe, per the ASA, requires a response time of eight to 13 minutes. And one of our concerns is, if the agreement goes forward as is, that 43-minute response time could be detrimental to the patients in our clinics that are having a true medical emergency. I think that's the majority of my comments, so thank you, and I would as well be happy to respond to any questions, so.
So for clarity, so you mentioned eight to 13-minute response time. You're referring to the co-located resources in the city of Lepine and not, I mean, could you explain the logic on that real quick again?
Yeah, I believe, and I'm sure that Tom with the ASA committee or Oliver could probably expand on this more accurately than me, but under the ASA agreement, our location within Lepine does require a response time of eight to 13 minutes when we call 911 for a medical emergency. And I think if CMT had a unit staffed in Bend, for example, they could not meet that response time requirement.
They'd get a serious speeding ticket.
That's true.
Serious.
All right.
Okay, thank you. So Oliver Tatum, and then Rex Lesur.
I do not have anything to add beyond what Mike has already said, so in the interest of time, I will pass on my...
Okay, Rex Lesur.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Rex Lesur. I'm a suburban citizen. It's been beaten pretty hard today that the community of Lepine is being underserved by its fire department. This isn't something that's happened recently, it's something that's taken time, there's lots of different reasons, but what's happened is, our community is... lots of different reasons, and, but what's happened is, our community has slipped into kind of like a second-class service. I mean, if, there's not enough people to come get you, if you need an ambulance, and the response times are as, what are we talking about, 400 delayed response times just this year? It's, it's something that needs to be worked on, and I believe that this agreement can help that, and I hope that the, the Board of Commissioners can work on it. But by specifically focusing on the clinics and forcing the clinics to accept service from a, from CMT out of Bend, we are discriminating against the clinics and giving them third-class service. So 42, 43 minutes, if I'm having a heart attack, I'm, and I'm at the clinic, I, I think that I should be treated a little bit better than that, than to be considered a, a third-class citizen because I'm at a, at a specific location within the district. On top of that, the, the clinics, according to the, the district's statistics, recall, their call, call volume is between 10 and 15% of the total call volume for the total district. Charlotte just said that she's only had 17 calls to the, to 911 so far this year, and we've already had 400-plus calls that they've had delayed responses on. So the clinics aren't the problem. The problem is the fact that the district does not have enough resources. One of the ways to solve that is, is to work with CMT, to become a full partner with the fire department, and to allow CMT to work on, on any and all cases, maybe have them focus on the less emergency cases, the cases that are not as much of an emergency, and to, and leave the, the, the more serious cases to the, to the true professionals that, that work for our department, and they are great guys. So it would be better if they had a true partnership for all calls. That would also give the CMT enough responses to provide them with enough calls to make this agreement work financially for them. I'd also like to just briefly comment on the ALS agreement, I'm sorry, the, the ASL Agreement, the ambulance service agreement that, that has. This agreement is really giving the fire department a franchise, and I assume that every single fire department and every single ambulance service in the county gets a similar agreement. There is nothing in this agreement that has any metrics about the quality of service that the district or the provider is supposed to provide. It pretty much just says, here's your, here's your territory, go serve it as best you can, and that, that strikes of, I mean, if you're going to give somebody a monopoly, the monopoly should say, okay, you got to provide a certain amount of agreement. Now, a, a certain amount of coverage to, for the community, because if there's no agreement, if there's no, no metric, if there's no standard, then nobody has to provide anything if they don't want to. So I would suggest or like to see the, the county address their agreement to make sure that there's a metric of some kind within the agreement to require that the people who have the agreement can and are able to serve the community adequately. Now, I don't know how to go about that, that's above my pay grade, but somebody needs to be putting something in the agreement that says, you got to have this much crew, you got to be able to respond this quickly, you can't, you know, have, you can't underserve your community. And one more thing, I would like to, to correct Jim Landis on the tax base issue. We are at compression levels within the district, only within the city of Lapine, which is a small part of the district. The tax base at that, within the city of Lapine, is in the $9.60 range. Most of the rest of the district, including where I live, same neighborhood as you do, Tony, my, my tax rate is $7.50 per hundred, or per thousand. So it, we are not at compression within the entire community. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yes. So that's it for the testimony in the room at this time. So I'm going to work my way through the list on the screen as I see it, and kind of work from the bottom right here. Well, yeah, it just changed, I'm glad I mentioned that. So I got, so Love Pearson first, and then we'll go from there. I kind of took a list on my page here. So Love Pearson, if you're available for testimony or willing.
I am here, hi.
Thank you.
I wasn't really prepared for this, but on behalf of the assisted living and memory care facility here in Lapine, we, we need the services, bottom line. And we have folks here that are on fixed incomes, and when we get these large bills from calling 911, it really puts them in a financial difficulty. Not only that this difficulty, but it causes a lot of stress on behalf of that bill and for the facility. So, you know, whatever we can work out as a community would be very appreciated for many elders in this community.
Great. Thank you very much for the testimony.
You're, you're welcome, thank you.
Great day. Ken Kemna.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ken Kemna, Fire Chief, Redmond Fire and Rescue. My request is simple, as, as council already stated, this is just, just an offer for additional input from the Zenthal Oregon Fire Chiefs Association. That group has officially not had an opportunity to weigh in on this and provide you with information, or at least a perspective from that body. I am prepared to take this issue to them at our next meeting, which is on the 21st. I have coordinated with Chief Sepkus, who will be providing a presentation to all of our members and answering any questions that they may have. Our EMS system in Deschutes County is a, is a regional system, and really, this is just an opportunity for the other fire chiefs to look at the contract, have an opportunity to have some discussion with Chief Sepkus and talk about what the long-term implications of this might be, and then provide you with any feedback from that body to help you make your decision going forward. So that is my only request today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Jared Jeffcott. If you'd like to provide testimony, there we go, thank you.
Oh, good afternoon, Jared Jeffcott, Captain, Sun River Fire Department. Most of my concerns have already been met through the testimony that's been given. I would like to, to state again that the proposed response time of 43 minutes is not acceptable within Deschutes County, and that would be too long for an emergency response.
Okay, thank you. Drew Norris.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Drew Norris, Benfire. I'm our Deputy Chief of EMS. Yeah, I, I would agree with Jared on that. You know, as part of the ASA Committee and being a member of this for, you know, going on five years now, we all would like to see Lapine have the appropriate responses and be able to serve their community correct, you know, to, to the fullest potential. I'd like to bring up that we all kind of, in, in Deschutes County, every fire department wears two hats. Everybody is a paramedic or a firefighter. One day you could be on a fire truck, one day you could be on the ambulance. So we all have these similar issues that we're facing. As for us here in Bend, you know, we faced the same issue, and we had to go out for a levy. It was an EMS levy only, and that's how we fund our ambulances. So that's something I think Lapine could look at doing in the future. As far as response times go, I agree that that 42 minutes is too long. I've had communications with Patrick at CMT, who's the owner, and he does intend to respond out of, out of Bend and not Lapine at this time because doesn't believe the call volume is going to be there for them to be able to staff a, a, a unit and be able to afford that. So I think as we move forward, we're still happy, as the ASA Committee, to try to find an appropriate measure to, to serve the community of Lapine, but there's just a few issues that we would like to discuss with Lapine prior to that occurring. And I'm happy to answer any questions if, if you have any. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Drew, I do have a question. Are there call levels, I think that was mentioned in, in a response letter at one point, but you know, when we say there's a heart attack or a stroke, are there call levels when, when resources are being dispatched? And you can explain as much as you might want to here, because that could just be out for anybody to answer also.
Yeah. So the, the way that we are dispatched through Deschutes County 911, Alpha and Bravo calls is, is what we call those, those are our low-acuity, low-priority calls. Charlie, Delta, and Echo car calls are more of our, they are our emergent calls, cardiac arrest, strokes, heart attacks, those types of things. I mean, I think it's important to note, too, that in the past, you know, we all work with CMT of one way or another, but they've never transported or been dispatched through the 911 system. Everything they've done has been through a non-emergent transfer center through St. Charles.
Great, thank you very much. So it's just good to hear the terminology, because I think we're going to be up to speed as Commissioners here on some pretty deep information here pretty soon.
Yeah, I think one more quick point that I'd like to bring up is that with everything COVID, we've seen an increase of likely 50% or more of intra-facility transport from hospital to hospital, whether that's Redmond to Bend, Redmond to Creek County, Redmond to Jefferson County, that CMT's trying to help provide those transports, but they're being overwhelmed, and we've been asked by St. Charles to step in as fire departments and assist with that as well. So I think that's just important to remember, that we're all very busy at this time, and I just, if CMT's going to be doing this, I hope they have the ability to provide the resources needed.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jared Ernest.
Hi, Jared Ernest, Captain at Blackbeet Ranch Fire. I have just a few concerns in here. Page two, third item under Therefore, the district's voluntary subscription for FireMed is not applicable to medical facility, transports, emergency, or non-emergency. Again, kind of harkening back that these aren't really intra-facility calls. And if the CMTO is going to be billing these patients directly, is FireMed not applicable? That's kind of disheartening if these constituents are paying into FireMed, and then they get a, a whole lump sum bill for an ambulance when they said, hey, you know, I paid for this, why is this not covering it? I don't want any further financial burden on these patients being placed on them. And then my other comment in here will be page three of the PPP drafted contract, item four, within the body of that paragraph, it says, "The district duty officer and/or CMTO may upgrade responses and add additional medics or fire units that may be necessary." And then, in the next sentence, "CMTO will be allowed to pen non-critical responses." I would like to see that cleaned up and see exactly who is in charge down there. If CMTO is working directly with Lapine Fire as a partner, they should be, in my mind, told what to do, not have duty officer privileges to upgrade or downgrade responses. I think that's the district's responsibility to do that, them being the franchisee. And that's all I have at this time. If you guys have any questions or need further comment, please reach out, I'm always available.
So Jared, are you part of the ASA Committee also?
Yes, I am part of the ASA Committee and the subcommittee that's been working to help with some of the issues in Lapine.
Great, thank you. So question of, when you mentioned FireMed and not intra-facility calls, is there clarity on that, or is that a debatable item? As in, FireMed, I think of it as $50, I put a sticker on the front window of my house, and I, you know, I get something for it, I would, luckily, I've never had to call. But is the definition of an intra-facility call up in the air or not?
I believe it's up in the air. I think we have to look at it, look at every single call that's ever happened in there, but I, I don't think that some of these transports are truly intra-facility calls as stated by.
Well, and that'd be the question, you know, can, if, is there a reference point where somebody can make that call, or do we have to make that call? You know, that's kind of what I'm, you know, who, who's going to make that clear call?
There is, there are definitions out there within different pieces of literature that say what would be intra-facility, intra-facility versus scene calls. Most of these clinics would be considered scene calls, so it'd go into that billing, billing the patient directly, not necessarily the facility. And if you are billing the patient directly, I just want them to be able to use their, their FireMed memberships to help offset some costs of the ambulance transport.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Not get hit with just a giant bill that they thought, hey, I paid for this, why am I not getting this? Oh, it's not even being recognized because it's a private party coming in to transport me and not my district. That's my concern.
So for clarity, did you say scene calls?
Yes, scene being wherever someone's at and someone calls 911, wherever that patient is at or that incident, that is the scene.
Okay.
So, sorry for intermixing part.
I can just see it'll be important if we get real clear. So, thank you.
Commissioner Debone, I might suggest that since this is a, a public meeting and this is, we're essentially making a record, perhaps we can have a brief explanation of what FireMed is.
Oh, sure.
So that doesn't have to be looked into at some later time by whomever is looking at the record.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, so the request by Chris Bell, our legal counsel, is to clarify FireMed. Um, do you, Tom Kuhn, are you capable or willing to do that? You know, kind of what FireMed is specifically?
I'm not able to do that at this time.
Is there anybody that, okay, so the chief can do that, so let's, yeah, so we'll be back to you in a few moments. So I saw Jeremy Ast, A S T, on the call also, are you here to testify?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the Sisters Camp Sherman Fire District. I'm on the ASA Committee, and I'm a ship commander here. I spoke to my fire chief, and the comments provided to you today by Chief Kemna with Redmond speak for my chief as well. As far as the other concerns, I believe that the ASA Committee expressed those, and Chris Bell has prepared a staff report for you that I believe addressed all, all of those.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anybody else on Zoom? I think that was the list of names I saw on there.
Tim Moore.
Tim Moore, okay. Yeah, so I don't see him on the screen, but.
I wasn't sure if he was.
So Tim Moore, you've been, you've joined into the meeting, do you have testimony on this subject?
I have no comments.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, is there any other testimony? So seeing none, back to you, chief. So thank you very much for, I think you're taking notes on some of the topics, and then we may have questions also.
Happy to answer questions. Littlest point, like I said earlier, my big thing, we were not invited to this most recent ASA Advisory Board meeting, and neither was our Board of County Commissioners, selected designated not invited to that meeting. And I think a lot of these questions are very good, and they would have been answered pretty simply. And so I'll let you lead, Tony, and I'll try to answer those questions.
So you're, are you referring to one of us being at the ASA meeting?
Yeah, last week's ASA meeting, Lapine Fire was not invited to that meeting. In fact, two chiefs have called me since then, felt really uncomfortable that we weren't there to be able to answer these questions, because they were very safe, they're good questions, and they're very basic questions, and they need to be answered. But if, if the county was really serious about moving this forward as, as quickly as we possibly can, because lives and property are at risk in South County, you would have think we would have been there and said, hey, we're having a meeting, let's get all this stuff dialed in, but no, it was more like, I'm going to be blunt, it was a meeting, and say, okay, let's come here today and have a lot, a bunch of questions for you guys, and now have to consider it a public hearing. But let's get to the questions.
Well, I'll just acknowledge, I mean, so I, I knew there was an ASA meeting in passing, it was mentioned that Lapine won't attend, so I don't know if you were asked not to attend or just not invited. Hopefully, that's not too much of an issue, but I mean, we can acknowledge this.
Sorry, it is an issue, we weren't invited. We should have been there, and, but that's passed, let's get to the questions.
Okay.
I want the board to realize that a lot of these questions could have been answered quite simply.
In a room with everybody.
Invited us to be an ASA meeting. What particularly hurts is we have an ASA selected person that this board nominates, and that person wasn't invited to that meeting either. And so that, I don't know if that's a violation of county process or not, but.
Yeah, well, let's document that as.
If the process would have been followed, I think we would have had, you know, more information for you to make a, a good decision today, so.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, go ahead, down list if you'd like to, stuff that you wanted to respond to as it was happening, and then.
Let's just go back, FireMed. It's pretty simple. The reason that's in the contract is that each agency that transports is responsible for their billing, whether they charge, they don't charge, whether they charge facilities, as you heard, CMT does charge facilities, they also charge patients. charge facilities, as you heard, CMT does charge facilities, they also charge patients. That contract fairly clearly lays that at the lap of whoever does the transport. It's no different if Crescent Fire or Sun River Fire would come today and transport a patient for us or even Bend Fire, they're in charge of that. That also goes...
How about just explanation about what fire med is, maybe two steps back?
Fire med is a fee that people pay in a community to their local fire department that offsets any out-of-pocket cost if they have an emergency transport. Fire med does not apply to intra-facility transport and also it's up to each individual agency to show where fire med does apply. Lapine Fire varies very specifically and its fire med documentation says that intra-facility transports are not covered. And so when the contract was written, it would try to be made clear to that CMT has, we are not going to mandate in the contract how CMT bills or does not bill, just like the county does not mandate to any of the ASA providers how they do their cost recovery for their services, whether it's through taxes or it's whether through fees or a combination of both, that is silent. The state of Oregon is silent on that. This whole system is precipitated on that. Once you've given the franchise to a group for 10 years, they're responsible for their own cost recovery. We carried that on to CMT because it just seemed to be appropriate and transparent. And the bottom line is, they're more efficient than we are and we think their cost recovery rates are going to be a lot better than ours. The second thing is, why did we narrow the focus to just certain addresses? The thing was, you don't want to go all in on everything, you want to tippy toe. All these addresses have professional, quite capable medical facilities and care available. And so if, if you had to prioritize triage calls, you have two, three, four calls going at the same time, it's happening today, that some calls are put on pending. And so would you pen the call to somebody bleeding out on a ranch or out on the highway or would you pen the call that someone's already in the care of a very capable medical doctor who has a staff, who has pharmacy and all the other things with them to keep that patient stable until they can get to a higher level, another higher level of care? So that's what the object was done. So that, the second question. That brings me into...
Can I ask a...
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question about that? So you mentioned that there were a number of, that you looked at a number of other communities that have structured these kinds of public-private partnerships.
Yes.
In those other areas, do they single out addresses?
Yes.
In the way that they structure, in the way that they structure their, their public-private partnership?
They not only single out addresses, but they also go to, my next point I was going to make, they also single out acuity of the call. In other words, the public-private partnership takes all Alpha, Bravo, Charlie calls, the public fire district paramedics take the Delta Echo calls. In other words, the call as a screen through dispatch, it, they send, basically they do different acuties. And what the Lapine contract simply does, and it's quite clear, that we believe somebody in the care of one of our professional healthcare facilities in our community is, everything else being equal, is in a better position than someone who's not. And so that's the same thing these other communities do, except that it's done at dispatch. Now, with that said, if you look closely at the contract, and I think one of the questions this board did answer and our board answered in writing back to you was, so what happens on resources? Our contract does not prohibit Lapine Fire from responding on any call that may be awfully sent to CMT on this public-private partnership. In fact, our run cards are such that any Charlie, Delta, Echo call, there's a multi, if their crews are available, we'll send multi-crews, so it's very feasible that a quick response unit, an ambulance will come from Lapine, CMT will come from wherever they're staged at the moment, they'll take care of the patient, and remember, paramedics, we stabilize on scene, and then the transport may happen from anybody, whatever happens after that. But maybe on a Bravo call or Alpha call, only CMT will respond. And then that becomes another question that one of the gentlemen had here from the ammo service area is, yes, we allow, if they get any radio information during that call that they say, we don't feel comfortable with it, we want to add a Lapine unit to this call, they can do that, we give them the ability, just like our duty officer says, hey, I want to add additional engine company to this, I want to add additional ambulance. In other words, we find the best decision for medical care not made by the administration is made by our paramedics in the field. And that the reason that sentence is in that contract is to make it clear that we believe in our paramedics, we believe in their training, and we also believe in CMT's paramedics and their training. And if they feel uncomfortable going to a call and they feel they need more assistance, they can call for it. And that's what that contract says. It also says, our duty officer can call for more resources. It also says the dispatch center will put them on a run card, so sometimes the more higher acuity calls will get responded not just from Lapine, but also CMT. Because the issue is twofold, one, who gets there first to take care of the patient, but you remember, transports in Lapine are two to two and a half hours, that crew is gone. And at the second call, and at the third call, and at the fourth call, and the fifth call, those are the people that aren't getting the care right now. And that's what CMT does. It does solve the solution completely, it isn't the perfect solution, but it shifts the whole dynamic a few steps to like, okay, it's a little bit better. It loosens the belt buckle a little bit. And yet they're still going to be, this isn't, this isn't the total answer, but it, we're at the point where we need to do something. So anyway, that was a great question.
So, sorry, hold on a second. So, I'm not remember, I do remember the, the proposed contract, you know, sorting those, those addresses and saying, you know, CMT will respond to those. I'm not remembering whether the proposed contract does the sort by acuity as well that you just described. So is it, is it set up to, you know, I'm particularly concerned because if, if CMT's response time, their, their kind of committed response time is much longer than, than, you know, Lapine Fire being able to respond, then it seems like that would be the way to sort it, to say, okay, the things that are lower acuity, we're going to use CMT for that and we're going to ensure that our rapid response resource is, is available to respond to the higher acuity.
Exactly. Well, to answer the question, one, it's in there, it allows CMT to add a resource to the call if they believe they're going to be longer than needed and they feel the call merits additional resources, even though it didn't get coded up. Nowhere in ASA do we get approval when we set up our run card, that's something that's done between our physician advisor, our paramedics, and 911. I don't even do that. They decide on the call acuity, what resources are being sent, when. And CMT would just be added into that mix as a, as a medical transport. So, so if a C call today to one of those addresses would have gotten two medics and a quick response unit, instead of having two Lapine medics and a quick response unit, they'd get a Lapine unit, quick response unit, and a CMT unit. Nothing changes except another added two, unit gets to that call. In other words, it adds another staff ambulance to our system. Now, on response times, it would be very poignant, our response time commitment to Deschutes County is 45 minutes. We are a rural area, that's our definition, there's no sub-districts. If the county has an issue with that, and now we manage that time a lot better than 45 minutes, but if there is going to be a change in that, that's a change in our franchise agreement. Yes, everyone would love to have four-minute response times. Lapine Fire District currently averages 10 to 15 minutes, okay, on the first call. The problem is, 434 times last year, we probably didn't make the 40 minutes because we're coming from Bend now, okay? We're not, we're not, you know, nobody's screaming because we have a first quick response unit there, but they're still waiting 40 minutes for an ambulance. We're not meeting current ASA standards. We need to add more resources. By adding CMT, we're not lengthening that time, we're shortening it for everybody. Okay? And again, the reason we limited the address, it is because, first off, it's an experiment, the first time it's being done, we limited it so our firefighters and other people, one of the things that I know the chief has been talking about, what are the downstream effects of having this PPP? What are the effects of others monopolies that was said early in the room? Well, people are nervous. Well, if we limit this as we start it and see how it works and gives it control, let's see if it works. And if it works for these addresses, which are, which have professional care, professional facilities, then we can expand it. You don't jump all in both feet, you know, and just say, well, let's try this and we walk away from the situation, this is adding resources slowly. You also get to look at it in two years again, if we approve it.
Let me see, do we have any questions today? Any other question?
Tax rates. You guys have any questions about tax rates and funding? Both statements are free, are true. Our charter for our ambulance from our voters in 1987 is a tax fee service. Now, obviously, what we get on fees has not been able to pay for the paramedic service we provide. So yes, we have actually three levies. We have a base levy of a buck fifty, we have an operations levy of five years, it's 23 cents, and then we have a capital levy of 64 cents. That equals $2.53 per thousand. We are in the top 10 highest tax fire districts, top 10% highest tax districts in the state. I believe only Blackbeet Ranch has a higher tax rate than we do. Most districts in this county, if they would have $2.53, they would have gold on the side of their fire trucks. We have a very high tax rate for Lapine, so it isn't that our, our citizens aren't paying any more taxes. And I'm a fire chief and I'm more than happy to take more money and spend more money. But, you know, we have to be realistic and say, where, what pot can you go to to get more resources? The difference in our, our area is that our cess valuation has been historically lower than the rest. We don't have houses stacked on end next to each other, we have big lots, homes that are spread out in a rural area, that's the nature of Lapine. And so we don't get the tax on developed property, we only get the tax, the development on the property. So we're not getting a lot. But our tax rate is in 10%, in the top 10% of the state of Oregon. So this district is, and the district is running on both tax money and fee money. We collect about $800,000 in fees a year. To add a new medic unit to our district would be, cost about $2.6 million. You know, it's not just $80,000. The other thing was, was mentioned earlier, had the district grown in the last five years? It absolutely had. I said earlier that the district has added five new firefighter paramedics in the last five years, one a year, as we, as more tax money came in, we've spent that money on personnel. Four of them are actually new positions, in other words, added to the district. And one of my board members said, it isn't just one person on an ambulance, an ambulance crew is a minimum of two, sometimes three, and you got to multiply that by three. So to have an ambulance crew, it takes six crew of people and at least three students. All right? Start running the numbers on that, and if a person costs $110,000, $120,000 a year for a position, you start seeing what the money comes to to do that. And so it, the challenge that the district has, we're looking to add resources and, and that's what this is about. So I think I've touched all the things that, that everyone prior to me came up and I'm happy to answer anymore. Appreciate your questions. Some of the questions were already answered to the board in writing, especially some of the questions that were from the ASA Advisory Committee. Our board, I think, did an outstanding job of answering those to you and they were very transparent and just straight up front, so. We need help and I need your help now.
Thank you. At the end of the questions. Tom Kuhn, as the ASA Administrator, any, any thoughts? I know that you're, you're out there and you've been deeply involved with this and thank you very much for getting the last kind of cycle of communication back and forth.
Yes, commissioners, I guess the final thoughts that I have is that myself and all the ASA committee members are in favor in working towards a solution to the situation. There definitely is a situation in Lapine where there's need for more ambulance service and we all agree upon, on that. Much of it is, has to do with geography and logistics and we're just all committed to working towards enabling Lapine Fire to get the resources that they need. And that's our ultimate goal.
Great, thank you. So for clarity, the Fire Chiefs Association request was out there, have you been invited to that or are you going to be part of...
Yes, sir, in fact, they called me when we weren't at the previous meeting, they felt it was fairly awkward. And I've been in contact with multiple chiefs from around the county. Also, before we went down the PPP road, this district did contact all the major fire districts that run ambulances in this county, said, look, we're looking to add capacity, do you want a part of this capacity solution? In other words, do you have excess capacity in your organization? Would you be willing to transfer some of that capacity to Lapine on a call-by-call basis? All were very intrigued by the offer, but after 24 to 48 hours, every one of them says, no, we're slammed also. And so it isn't like this is a surprise to them, been working through. The small questions that everyone's have are very valid. One of the ones I received was what happens with mutual aid? Mutual aid the same now, if we're working with Crescent and Sun River calls us, we don't send Crescent to the Sun River call. Either we take the call or we say we are not able to respond and then we allow Sun River to ask what resource they want next. But yes, CMT is listed as a mutual aid resource for the Lapine Fire District, it just makes sense. However, that doesn't bind any of the other franchisee holders or any other fire district. Great question from the chiefs, but just because they're on our call card doesn't mean they get supplanted to another fire district.
Yeah, okay, interesting. Great, thank you. Any other questions? So just, just throwing it out there, at this point, there's a proposed agreement provided by the district to the county. But, you know, contracting wise, this would be an agreement between the district and CMT and the county would authorize, you know, the ability to do that contract. So I'm just acknowledging, I don't see it as a three-party signature document, which we started off with. So let's, you know, when we get down to it, let's make sure we're real clear, if that's the, you know, if we're getting there. So then it puts in the question of what does the board, how much definition to that contract does the board put? So that's going to be the, you know, if we get to yes and then with sideboards, how do we do that, I guess is what I'm...
I am in total agreement with that and you got to remember, my board's an elected board of our community, there are elected officials and they're signing the contract. I heard Tony Loud and Clear suggested this earlier, that it's not a three-way contract between the county, the fire district, and CMT. The county is just allowing, per the county ordinance, in other words, not endorsing even, just giving them the blessing, say, yes, move forward, young child, right? And you can do this contract, we're going to come back and look at it in two years. So that needs to be removed, but then that also brings the question, how much detail does the board of commissioners want in that contract? If the district is responsible, one of the questions the board did ask our board was, the fire district is still responsible for 100% of those calls, they're still responsible for the care of the patient, they're still responsible for all the time. We're in that chain of command. It's no different than if the fire district hired two new paramedics and put a third ambulance on, we're still responsible for that resource. And that, the district in no way is skirting that responsibility. In fact, we accept it because we want to keep the quality of care up and things like that. We want to do this in a measured way and in a step-by-step way, so.
Yeah, great. So I'm just acknowledging that, yeah, we'll have to figure that one out a little bit. Okay, is there anything else for this public hearing?
I mean, I guess I would just say that I appreciate everyone coming today to emphasize the need for additional resources, additional capacity. It's been very helpful learning from all of you, some of the, some of the finer points of how that would, you know, how that could be delivered and, and what the trade-offs are. Because there's, you know, that, that, some of the earlier comments were like, well, this isn't going to cost the district or the county anything, but there are, there are costs associated with everything and, and, you know, the question is, who pays, who pays those costs and, and where, you know, who bears the trade-offs that are associated with, with different solutions? So it was very helpful to get a better understanding of what all of those are. Thank you.
And I would just like to say, looking into our entire central Oregon community and the fact that Madras has an emergency room, Prineville has an emergency room, Redmond has an emergency, Department of Emergency Room, and honestly, I was leaning to what Charlotte said today, I, you know, when you Google St. Charles and Lapine, it comes up emergency. Well, I would really like to see that happen. One of my dearest friends lives in Lapine and was having all kinds of medical issues with her husband. She's talking to me about it and every time she had to, he had to be transported to Bend. And some of the things that needed to be done were really quite simple. My, my husband is a retired doctor. So anyway, I really would hope that St. Charles would look into that possibility, looking at the populations, thinking that it's serving North Clamath, Christmas Valley, all that huge area, there's what, 25, 30,000 people down there? And if that's something that could be added, I feel like you would have, you know, just a better healthcare situation and truly it would make a difference, a positive difference. So, you know, we love our people in South County.
All over the county.
Do we want to give, do we want to give Mike a chance to speak to the kind of practicalities or feasibility of that?
Of a...
Since the question has been raised.
Emergency room?
No. Uh, no, um, Mike Richards from St. Charles.
I didn't get the question, sir.
No, I think it's something that they need to think about.
Commissioner Dare was just asking about, you know, the fees, essentially, she was asking about the feasibility of having an emergency department in, at, uh, St. Charles, Lepine.
And he was pointing out, Mike Richards from St. Charles might want to say something.
I would, I would.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Um, well, thanks again for letting me speak. Commissioner Dare brings up a really good point, and it is something that we have looked into in the past, and, you know, we, we would love the opportunity to build a brand-new hospital in Lepine. Um, you know, unfortunately, with the way healthcare economics are right now, um, the population i- isn't there, honestly, to support a new hospital in Lepine today. And honestly, um, a lot of the rural hospitals are the, in, around the country today, are the product of prior government programs, critical access hospital programs, that have allowed the, the construction of those hospitals in communities, uh, with, with small populations. And, uh, that is fantastic that those communities have those hospitals, but, um, it, it really isn't feasible under today's economic model, and if we were to start with a clean slate today, many of those communities wouldn't have hospitals, they, we wouldn't be able to support them if we were to start from scratch today, un, unfortunately.
I, I wasn't asking for a hospital, and honestly, Oregon and Washington State have the fewest beds per thousand in the whole bloody nation. I mean, the fewest beds. And, you know, I, you know, we keep hearing about this, and I'm going like, "How did we get at the bottom end of the beds?" But I'm not asking for beds, I'm just asking for an emergency department that actually is an emergency department. Um, I realize asking for more beds is truly, um, at this moment in time, probably not appropriate, but actually, being able to do more medical procedures there, so that people don't have to drive for an hour, uh, you know, to Bend, for something basically pretty simple, and, um, having better, you know, physicians that can actually assess things and make a difference, I think it would be really impactful for our Lepine community, for that, that neighborhood. So I'm not asking for a hospital, I'm just saying, let's have a real emergency department.
No, and absolutely, and that's something that we have looked into in the past, and we probably do need to look into again. And, you know, I would say we have, um, fantastic physicians at our clinic, many of whom are prior emergency department physicians with, with lengthy experience in emergency department, and it is really the difference of what equipment and support they have there onsite, and it's, it's a much bigger, um, footprint in equipment and staffing to have an emergency department, but that's certainly something we can look into again.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
So for this public hearing, um, it sounds like a written record should be left open for this topic. Uh, you know, there was ASA comments mentioned, and Fire Chiefs Association. So, uh, can you help a little bit? I mean, yeah, how formal does this need to be? So I'm thinking, just set a date, a written record?
Yeah, exactly, it would be to set, identify a date when the board will deliberate, and ideally, make a decision on whether it's going to approve the proposed agreement or not.
The 21st was the meeting, which is next Thursday, that Chris said he wants, you know, to see what comes out of that meeting. So I would think at some point after that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd really like to hear the, kind of the, the findings or the recommendations after, after that discussion takes place. This is, you know, this is a, you know, this, this is new business to me, and, uh, you know, it would be, I think it would be great to hear, uh, what a number of other comparable districts, comparable executives in, in, you know, in this arena are, um, you know, what questions they have, and, and what, what their assessment is.
So what about, as a proposed date to get together on this topic on the 27th, which is two weeks from now, uh, to deliberate, you know, and then, because we'll still find out if we're, we can land this or not, but.
No, that sounds appropriate.
Okay, 27th. Very good. So, yeah, please provide, uh, written record by the end of next week, I guess we'll call it the 20.
Yeah, I mean, this is, because it's somewhat legislative, you could have.
Yeah, okay.
Record documents right up until your decision time, if, if you.
It's an ask, then, please provide by the end of next week.
Really, the sooner the better, so you have time to digest it, but.
And then we'll reconvene on this topic on the 27th, possible decision to be made.
Yeah, Chris, do you know, will the chiefs be providing some sort of a written, um, report back to the board prior, you know, after their meeting on the 21st, or is, how are they going to know what the, the chiefs group feels?
We have Chief Kemna.
Chief Kemna's hand up. That's what I was going to suggest.
Mr. DeBong, are we?
Um, as you said, the meeting is on the 21st, uh, we're set to have some discussion on that date, and I can certainly turn around any written documentation that you would like, a letter from the Central Oregon Fire Chiefs, answering any questions that you might have. I'm also happy if you participate in open testimony and present that, uh, in person as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, yeah, if there's any questions of the commissioners, maybe write them down and put them out there to the world. I mean, we've had our open public hearing on the topic today, but if there's anything that's a question, let's make sure to get it to the, all parties. Okay. Uh, so for this topic, it looks like we're completed today. Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, this has been really good to move this topic forwards. Uh, so Commissioner Dare, I think we have.
What is our?
Executive session.
What is it on?
Uh, I'm not going to mention it.
Okay, don't mention it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so it shouldn't be too long, right?
Yeah, I think we're going to be good.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you for joining us, everyone. At this time, other items, just any other updates?
I think you're kind of.
Uh, and, in fact, for the record, I'd like to acknowledge, we had, uh, citizen input. It was on the table all day, and I just didn't even pull it up. So at the very beginning of the meeting, we had citizen input topic. Uh, this one is for homeless camps, it was sent to, I think, board and citizen input at dishutz.org, uh, and it's just referring to, uh, please move forward and managing the homeless situation. So I want to thank for, thanks, Brett Hutch's, no, no. That, that's our staff that forwarded this email. I guess it's not signed. I want to thank for that input. Is there any other items?
I thought we also got citizen input about the, uh, about the, um, uh, the Connors property sale and, and the price, and what should be done with those funds, but.
So I'll acknowledge, yes, we absolutely did. Uh, so this is printed out by staff and put on the table. We've got emails that are sent to board and citizen input, and I think some of those were through citizen input. Uh, so that, that's on the Connors property, the editorial, and, and the letter to the editor in the paper, uh, and I did see multiple emails on that, and we saw them since, since this morning, too. I don't know if you saw, there was a few of them that came in.
I haven't had a chance to look.
Yeah, okay, I was able to just look at it real quick. Uh, right, um, I was able, able to attend a community conversation, uh, Black History, BH365, it was just an effort, BH365.org, it's really just an interesting, uh, national